Good morning.
It's now the hour of nine thirty. Opening workshop for Tuesday, January fourteenth. First item of business is legislative update from Potts and Social. Lobbyist Zach Kennedy.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, you guys hear me okay? Sounds like it.
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. So first question for you guys, did you all get my email I sent out Sunday evening?
Yes.
Fantastic. Means I got the emails right. That makes me feel very warm and fuzzy. All right, now to the more interesting things that are going on in the state. Yesterday was our first day. Obviously, we're into the second day today and they're getting after it. So I think the tone right now, because we are so early in the session, it's really difficult to see what's gonna happen. Obviously, we've got some policy bills on the docket and we kind of know that there are things coming. But what was really interesting and has caused quite the stir is Governor-elect Bob Ferguson's stance on taxes and revenue. As we all know, there's a very, very sizable budget deficit upwards. You know, some are saying it's over twelve billion over the biennium, some are more, okay, it's seven billion. I think it was completely unexpected that Bob Ferguson would come out and say, no, you have to cut before we're gonna raise new taxes. And I think that's evidenced specifically by, and I gotta find the news report. If I find it, I'll shoot it to you guys if you haven't seen it. I think it was on Como Four. And they were interviewing the majority and minority leaders in the House and the Senate. But I thought it was most interesting when they were interviewing Jamie Peterson, who is the Senate Majority Leader. And he was referencing really specifically the initiative vote specifically on the Carbon Commitment or Climate Commitment Act. And he said, well, we have seen that the citizens of Washington State overwhelmingly wanted to keep that particular act. And he said, because that was the vote, we think that the people of Washington State are willing to be taxed as long as their money is being spent in places they like. Indicating that their plan was just to raise taxes to support the programs that are already in place or the money that was appropriated over the previous sessions. Long story short, Governor-elect Ferguson came out and said, no, that's not gonna be the case. I wanna see four billion in cuts minimum before we move forward. Now, I'll give you the caveat on that, and that is his fallback has been, when asked any more pointed questions, when Ferguson was asked the pointed question, well, how are you gonna do that? How are you gonna make this happen? His kind of recorded response, if you will, is, well, I'm not governor yet, so I gotta be, you know, be careful what I say. So we'll see what really happens when he's in the trenches and actually under fire and then if he holds to his cuts before taxes, et cetera. The other thing that was a little bit of a surprise with this governor is he is actually appointing, whether it be director or deputy director positions throughout his cabinet, actual Republican former, you know, House members, Senate members, things like that. So he's kind of taken a bipartisan approach so far, which I think was a pretty big surprise to a lot of people. You know, and that being said, this session is gonna be unlike quite a few we've had in a long time because we do have a new governor who's already throwing us curveballs. We have a lot of freshman legislators and there has been even more turnover in the legislative aides in both the House and the Senate in both parties. So that means that we've lost a lot of institutional memory. And the institutional memory that was here has been thrown for a loop in the first part of session, specifically with respect to revenue packages and where the money is going and coming from. That said, I would definitely expect to see a lot of emphasis on housing. I'd expect to see a lot of emphasis on, you know, we're probably gonna see a lot of firearms stuff, public safety, et cetera. We're probably gonna see a lot coming back in with retirement plans, anything that costs money. There's a lot of conversations around the transportation packages and transportation revenue. As we all know, gas tax funds a lot of what we do in this state with regards to transportation and other activities. And we're seeing diminishing gas prices or gas revenues for a lot of reasons. So the road usage charge is definitely on the table. You know, the idea is phase it in voluntarily and then, you know, that ends up being just how it is. So there's kind of the same conversations that we've been having for a long time on, you know, if you're gonna tax us, give our money back to us, no unfunded mandates. We're definitely seeing a lot of, I think, a push towards affordable housing, you know, I mean, we're kicking around the idea of rent control. So just lots of stuff here in the very beginning, I'm getting it on really good authority that most of the new LAs are just scrambling, legislative assistants, they're scrambling and have no idea how to handle the workload. So there's a little bit of a learning curve here in getting access to senators and representatives, but they'll figure it out. So give them a week or so to kind of come around and, you know, we'll come back into that one. The other thing that I thought was interesting, just kind of bring it back around from the Steering Committee meeting. The Association of Washington Cities is advocating at this point for a levy lid raise, you know, basically on property tax raise from the 1% annually. The Association of Washington Cities is in support of raising that limit. In the conversation that Paul Jewell was describing that he had with the budget writers, you know, from the counties, because obviously the counties have some ideas on that and there's some dissension amongst the different counties, do we raise that or not? They were told to not, or asked, please don't make any submissions, you know, don't run any bills yet. We kind of wanna flush this out and see what happens. That's the first time I've ever really heard of that happening. And it is really, if you start looking at the bills that they've got coming into session right now, the prefiled bills, they're testing the waters. Both parties are seeing, you know, what the tolerance is of the other party, what the tolerance is of the voters and, you know, what the news is gonna latch on to, what's gonna be popular and not. So the first six, eight weeks of session here, expect some really weird stuff. There's a lot of bills out there that are really just to test the waters. They probably won't go anywhere. They might move them quickly in committee and then maybe never execute them or not pull them out of rules. So that's my updates for you guys. There's also, I know you're always constantly watching property tax stuff. You know, there's some definite conversations happening right now around citing for renewable energy projects. There's some questions going into FSX, seeing what, you know, authority-wise, who should have the final say? I don't know if they'll work too much on that this year, but it is happening in terms of the conversation. So we're gonna stay apprised of those and make sure you guys know what's going on there. Is there anything on your side, budget-wise, policy-wise, anything specific that you have questions on or anything you'd like to focus on this year?
Before we get into that, Zach, I wanted to ask, who did you say was in support for raising 1%?
So far, it sounds like, and I haven't heard the newest policy statement, but AWC, Association of Washington Cities. So I've gotta check their newest policy statements. But that was the word that was given to me and I don't know if it's all of the cities or the association or somebody saying that the association is, there might be a couple cities. Really, that's a, it seems to be a big urban rural issue. You know, the bigger, bigger cities, King County, for the bigger counties, Pierce, Snohomish, do have a lot of value on that, you know, you raise the property tax, it makes them, you know, forty, fifty million dollars. You guys raise the property tax by a percentage. It really angers everyone around you who has your cellphone and your email and show up at these meetings and you don't raise hardly any money. So the thing that we're concerned about with that is the same thing that we're always concerned about. And, you know, the counties always advocate for local control. What we're afraid of is if that limit is raised to 3% or more, whatever it may be, if it's raised at all, even a tenth of a percent. It gives the legislators, they call it a stick, to come back to you guys when you say at the county level, hey, we need more money for these things. They look at you and say, well, are you using the full authority of your taxation? You're gonna say, well, no, because nobody wants to pay that extra 2%. Well, then the legislators come back and say, well, why should we use state dollars to give you money when you have the ability to raise the money yourself? That's kind of been the crux of this discussion all the way through. And really, I think this issue is probably why King County stepped back a little bit from the Association of Counties.
Zach, this is Lori Zoller. Thank you for the updates, especially in regards to beginnings of our governor, where that may go. That was a good update. I'll have to spend some time with you and give you a call and get up to speed on some things. But I know in our county, some of the things we hear because we're so rural are impacts around the ESA, wolves and gray squirrels. I think that's gonna be important to our county. The tax carbon in regards to timber in the schools and our school properties is important to our people. We hear that. Senior citizen issues and also childcare is something we heard all last year or two. So I'm sure that those people interested will, will keep that on our bucket list.
Certainly. And I, I'm just kind of making a list here for you guys. What I, I've had a request from a couple other counties here to put out a rural counties priority list, if you will, like, you know, not counter to WASAC, but just, hey, in the rural areas, these are the issues that are really affecting our citizens, you know, let alone county government. But here's what's really affecting our citizens and can we advocate for these things? So what I'm doing is I'm kind of putting together just a one-pager. Something that I can hand out to the legislative aides to give to their members or to the members directly, you know, in a meeting and say, here's some of the rural priorities. This isn't counter to what the association's doing, it's just to bring your attention to how this impacts our people. I'm gonna put that together and I'll shoot it over to you guys for approval. And if you have anything that you want to add to it, by all means, I'd be happy to do that. And the goal is to get, you know, as many rural counties as we can to say, yeah, this, these are issues for our people. Because while the association is absolutely fantastic and they do a great job for us, you know, they can't go up on the hill and advocate for, I mean, realistically, they can't even go up as an association and advocate for timber counties. All right, they have their own little delegation that we've set up as a Timber County Caucus, which our new chair is absolutely fantastic. But I think it's important that your guys' voice is heard and we make sure that the new legislators especially understand how the policy they pass impacts you guys.
No, this is Commissioner Ivey. I appreciate that, especially rural, especially when it comes down to have the discussion of ESA. Yeah, from the local authority. And Lori had touched base on it. I know one that I've really been following is Department of Fish and Wildlife on the gray squirrel. When they come up with policies and then how's that affect and move forward into the whole legislature from that commission. But I really appreciate it if I can get the rural counties for a week and start talking amongst ourselves of what we really support about.
Absolutely, you know, and it's my pleasure. This is a fight, they say, that we've been fighting for, I mean, decades just to make sure that we're not forgotten out here because we, we do manage a lot of resources, whether it be natural resources, transportation resources, a lot of the support for the rest of the state, you know. I mean, I-90 goes through a lot of rural counties. Highway two goes through even more rural counties. You know, so I mean, there's a lot of work that we need to do to make sure that, number one, we're not forgotten. And number two, that the people that are making these laws, you know, there's a lot of legislators from Seattle who've never been out of the city. And we just need to make sure that they understand there are people who prefer not to live in the city.
And always anything to do with water.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, Zach Todd Andrews here, since you brought up forestry. The, and then the California fires, it was already one of our top things and then the California fires keep bringing it up. A lot of people in this area are losing their homeowner's insurance or their homeowner's insurance is tripling. And so local management of forest and fuel reductions probably way up there and keeps climbing.
I, you know, and I think with respect to that, we've heard some conversations coming in, looking at the wildland urban interface policy, you know. I don't know if that's gonna have much of an impact on insurance rates, but it is the state's attempt to, you know, kind of dictate, you know, don't put firewood next to your house and clear the, clear the woods, things. I mean, just with respect to building codes, particularly, I'm not a huge fan because I do think it supplants that local control. And, you know, we're gonna see something come out of those fires in California and the fires here, you know, to be honest. And so it's definitely something to watch. I don't know what they can do about the homeowner's insurance. And, I mean, we know that a lot of people in the high-risk areas, whether it be for fire or flood, are, you know, seeing triple the rates or being canceled. So I know that that is top on the list. I don't know what they plan to do about it because I don't think they have a really good approach just yet, but we will definitely watch it.
Anything else at this time? Well, thank you for your time, Zach.
Absolutely. And the last thing I'll say for you guys is I am just a phone call away, call, text, email, anytime. I'm available if I'm in committee or busy in a meeting or something, shoot me a text. I will call back as soon as I possibly can. But I am a resource. I'm here. Use me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. Hey, you guys have a wonderful day. Really appreciate it and we'll be in touch.
You too. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the department update with Public Works.
Good morning. How are you, Zach?
Good. How are you?
You're right.
All right. How are you?
That one's C P S.
Here's your work. We'll be in business.
There we go.
Okay.
He'll do it to you every week.
Yeah, I'm like, no, go ahead.
Okay.
Starting to read the consent agenda.
We have some stuff on the consent agenda. Very happy we get to discuss it before we vote on it this time. One is to amend an existing lease agreement with James Dean Construction for a quarry site. This is, we are working on a land swap. We have no use for the property that sits in the middle of this quarry and has sat in the middle of that quarry for, I don't know how many years. I didn't even know we had the property, to be honest with you. But we are working on a land swap for property he has out east. But I don't wanna get into too many details on that.
So is that why it's only a two-year lease than five?
That is why it's only a two-year lease.
Thank you.
That is exactly why. And then item eighteen is a small works contract for On Call Electrical. We do this every year. If we don't do on calls, it's very hard for us to get electricians. So this way, we kind of get them locked up and we can use, we have, we do this so we get standardized pricing on to put in an outlet, put in a light, to put, to run a circuit. So it's a pretty good contract. We've been using it for years. Then number nineteen, approval to advertise for notice for the airport project. Long time, a lot of work. But we're there. We're finally finalizing to go out to add with the bid opening February eleventh.
So I'm gonna ask you a question about the business park, just so Ron may know more, but get us up to speed. Within the airport, there are so many dedicated air, some are actually dedicated absolutely for airport. And we were able in the past to set aside acreage and make it into a business park in hopes of attracting businesses, which we have a few, but we need to get busy doing that for economic development, for jobs. Specifically for jobs, I think it was dedicated to help improve the area for jobs. That happened through the Economic Development Board and they had to vote to do that, correct?
Yes. It was done quite a while ago. Commissioners over it a hundred percent correct. She's been the lead on this. It's thank all her help to get this project on the ground or keep it moving forward. Yes, there was a movement to change it back, but long-term, the county looked at that years when it was set up as a business park to bring in business. And the first grant that we got was from KIR, which was, stands for Community Economic Resource Board, I think.
So it's Department of Commerce.
Yes, Department of Commerce. That was the first grant. Then we've gotten grants from Federal E D A, which is Economic Development. I can't remember what the A stands for, but.
And I think in light of differences in Dallas port and differences at the airport, I think it's important for the commissioners to get up to history on that business park, why it was created, what it's for. And also, if anybody wanted to change something, what does that look like? Because I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if one entity can just choose, well, we're gonna change this and change the property and change the boundaries, that was Department of Commerce. That was our Economic Development Board, which is separate from us, and that was county commissioners. It would be kind of a heavy lift if we, it wouldn't be just an instant overnight change. We would have to go through a lot to make those changes.
Yeah, and, you know, again, like you and I've worked on it, Commissioner Zoller. For the county, it has a lot different meaning than it does for the city of the Dallas because we get tax base out of that business park. They don't.
And so I think we need to maybe invite the city of the Dallas over to visit and have a full-on meeting so we can all get reeducated. We're half-partners in it. But over time, with everybody changing positions, especially at the city, there's a different look what that business park really is and what it's dedicated for. So I think we need to maybe work on our relationship.
Yes.
If that would be all right with you guys, if we have them come on over and visit with us.
Yeah, I think it's good to educate us and bring us up to speed.
And have staff in the room when we do it so we can ask those questions.
Yes, I have to, we're still pursuing our other, our thing with sewer connections.
Yeah.
We have, we have to reach out to a couple people, but we've gotten it much closer over the last week or two. So we'll have something for that. And then, which I would go with you first and then we can bring it, we'll need a decision on how, with the whole board, how we wanna pursue those, the link went, I guess we would call sewer connections. But I don't wanna get into too much till I actually have solid, we're pretty close. And then, of course, we have a pay estimate for Oliver's floor covering. It's the second and final. This is for the Superior Court project. And with that, we'll talk about the roadside of construction and design.
All right. So far, we don't have any construction going. We're working towards getting projects started. So a lot of paperwork being exchanged back and forth with our contractors. That's both for our bid on the highway overlay and sunny side road project. On road design, the bridge repair bundles consultant completed their designs, I think they reported last week. Right now, we're working on environmental processes and there may be a little bit of a hiccup there. I'm not quite sure all what's involved with that, but we're looking into it. White plastic edge lines, the bids are due next Tuesday. Her warning signs, plans have been assembled and are in internal review in our office. The road safety plan update agreement is with Wash Dot for the final review. And next, we'll be bringing it before you for execution to get that consultant started on the design.
Could you go a little more detail on the road safety plan update, what's involved with that?
So back in, I think it was 2017, we worked with a consultant and in conjunction with, I think it was F H W A.
Yes, it was.
To develop a, a local road safety plan. And it looked at the system as a whole, what are our problems, what kind of accidents, crashes do we see in our county? And where should we be focusing our efforts and trying to improve those safety? And trying to remember all of the, our top number one accident was run off the road. So what contributes to run off the road and what kind of projects could we do to fix? And over the years, we've used that to leverage, I don't, sort of five million plus dollars worth of safety grants. And now this project is to update that plan to see what has worked, what is still remaining that needs to be done. And again, look at the system as a whole, our current crashes that have happened since we last did the update and come up with a list of projects so we continue getting our safety money.
Yeah, we were pretty proud that we were the pilot program. We were the first rural county in the country to actually be involved in that. So we had, we had DC, like I said, it paid off for us quite beneficial area because F H W kind of used our pilot program to set what the road safety plans would be and how everything was gonna be done. Instead of doing spot accidents or spot fixes because you had a fatality here, they look at and fix this spot, chasing those, they found that that wasn't the best thing to do. Best thing to do is look at what causes it and then fix those. And we were able to do things like we did the BZ corridor safety program, which means we removed fixed objects, trees, rocks, all that kind of stuff. And then we do white edge line out there. Probably, I think we did, we did fencing, so guardrails. So we did a whole, we did corridors and that's what we're doing now.
And this is funded by a federal grant as well to update that.
Yes.
I just appreciate you going in order of detail, but I understand sometimes you have to ask the question, why are we doing what we're doing? And the result of it, I believe.
Yeah, we will try to educate a little more. So we will definitely try to spend some time educating a little more.
And that the grant dollars were just for the study? Or the grant dollars go into some of the fencing of the.
Further grant money.
We have other like white plastic edge line, curb signs, those are granted same, same dollars grant. Well, I think those are state, state trading amount, but anyway. Those are federal, basically federal grants too. And then we have to update the safety plan because ours was one of the very first ones in, or was probably the first one in. And the feds are like, well, you gotta update your plans. It's probably time we update ours.
Thank you.
Okay, on the maintenance side, east side, we got grading, got some pothole patching. So yes, we will be taking a trip down to Wish Ram to take a look. Some spot graveling and some winter work. On the west end, we gotta clear the slide on Old Highway Eight. We're gonna revisit that here in a minute. We got some hand brushing, some winter work, and we got a burner brush pile that we acquired that we have outside of the town of Lisle and a quarry. We get a P and R permit that we got when we cleaned up the FEMA mess of the trees down. So we're taking care of that. This are burning up pile. On the upcoming, are the facility side, all the benches have been installed in the courthouse. They were all pulled out, refinished, and now they're, they've been installed. We have, only thing we have left to do is put the ballistic panels in. And then, once they come in, and then we'll be done with that project. Yeah, that is funded by a E H A P grant.
Those panels go where?
They go in front of like the clerk and things like that. We also have, there is Kevlar now and the judges benches. We also have, there is, uh, Kevlar now and the judges benches and that kind of thing, so. It was done for safety and ADA reasons. Uh, let's see, Fuel Island, uh, plans are back to the consultant, we did our review, we're back to the consultant on that, jailments the same thing. Health department, the graphics are scheduled to be reinstalled this week, like I said, they. They put up, they had two choices and they got one right, one wrong. We told them where to put them and they put them in the wrong place, so they'll have to reinstall them on their own dime. Uh, behavioral health sign that will be installed this week, they have a new sign that we're gonna install that Fuel Addicts. Uh, Dallasport Community Center, the ceiling replacement begins this Thursday, we've worked with everybody that uses it. Uh, so when they have the meetings, we'll have a reass- we'll have a reassessment. At least their ceiling may not be there, but we'll make sure that all the insulation has been removed. It's blown in insulation, so it's kind of a messy project. Okay, some other follow up issues, um. A while ago, we have, we've been functioning, we have two foremen in each, each one of our ship, each one of our areas. So we have a foreman on the west side in White Salmon and one in Glenwood. And then we have one in Pickleton and one in Golden Dale. We have not, we did not fill the, um, Glenwood Foreman position. One, because we had, we had four openings, which we have filled. And we wanted to see if we could hire from within. But we didn't, uh, so we didn't fill it. Well, now, we've given a stipend to the other foreman, because he's doing both the work. But we would like to fill that position from within. It's not a new position, we won't backfill the person that takes that position. So we'd like permission to to fill the foreman position.
I'm assuming the position was budgeted?
Yes.
Approved?
Yes, it is budgeted, it is approved, it is on our word, our work chart.
Because that will be the question I have on any position, was it budgeted and approved?
Yes, it was budgeted and approved. We just haven't filled it.
I'm just giving peoples ahead to.
Considerate over the past couple of years when I've been here, that they're thinking of.
Yes, we have it, we just wanted, we want to get that person in. And we have one more, which is budgeted, because the person actually is here today. Um, we have a retiree coming up. He's gonna retire at the end of the month, end of February, we talked him into staying. But we would like to backfill that position too. We still, that still leaves us an open position in each one of our shops that we have not backfilled, and we're gonna try to do with that. Uh, we will have that, I've been mean, I was hoping to get it together, but like I. Like I talked to the board and talked to the public, we're based on our snow routes. And we've made it work by moving, well, the reason we made it work, we don't have any snow. But we've also made it work by, you know, having people that would plow this route. They do part of that route that we don't have somebody to do, that does slow our response time down, and we have heard about. But right now, we don't have any snow, so we're not, we're not anticipating filling those two positions right now that we have open one on each side, but we are asking. To fill the position of the guy retiring in February.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, and I reattached the picture again on the back. Is the, uh, is the slide. We went out and looked at it the other day again. And it's, it's not. It's not as stable as I would like it to be, we're gonna have to put it on the six years of project. Eventually, it'll have to be rock scale. Uh, but in the interim, and you're probably looking at in excess of a million dollars. Rock scale and and. But in the interim though, what we would like to do, because Frank, I don't have a million dollars to do that. What we'd like to do is order. Jersey barriers to put along, something state has done in the past, they do it on fourteen. Um, and those are outside of my budget to purchase, or outside of my authority. Because they cost about twenty five thousand dollars to purchase, to install along the edge. Uh, they're the the bigger ones you put, they put like on fourteen. Um, we're not asking for more money, we have it in our budget, we're just asking for the the ability to spend twenty five thousand dollars.
Are all those gone into airport?
Yeah, those are too short.
Okay.
We looked at those, the problem is, is the rocks will bounce, it's good, and not only that, they're not big enough. So they would, they could not come over, these are the big tall jersey barriers like you see on fourteen. But they're narrow enough that they won't encumber the lane at all.
So that's the best option to get us by for some time.
Yes, that is the best option, and those can stay there, that's. They're made to be a more of a permanent item, that's why we're, that's why we're recommending that taller jersey barriers. And that gives us some time. To, you know, Seth and I were kind of brainstorming, maybe we could find some grant money, I don't know, that's. You know, or we just put it on the list and we look at. You know, I, you know, you know, we'll put it on the six year, because it protects us in case something happens. But at the same time, we can look at ways to figure out to. Gives us an opportunity to to investigate more how we could do it, do it more feasible. But right now, we're just kind of brainstorming, we're thinking you're probably running. To rock scale it, and you're probably, you might put the, you might end up putting up the best you see. That's all specialty work. And at today's prices, and what you're paying for.
And is rock scaling, is that just a general term for fencing or whatever the fix is, or?
Well, it's what they do is, is when they rock scale, they hang off the ropes, and they literally are up there with bars. And they knock, they pull out any of the loose rock, and then they'll come up, and then they'll put that mesh up.
Okay.
And then that's a permanent fix, or they can bolt. I would think in this instance, they would use the mesh, but we wouldn't know until we actually get into it with a geotech.
Right.
Uh. But we, we did do that over in, on Old Highway Eight and other, if I rode on bike, and I think it was half a million dollars.
Yeah.
And then, and that was in, I wanna say twenty eleven.
Just wishing that any help from federal partners.
That's what we're gonna look into, federal or state. Uh, but this buys us time to do it, we don't have to do anything, we put up these jersey barrier, we'll clean the ditch. Pull all the big rock out, which we're doing that anyway. And then we'll put in the jersey barriers, if I get the permission to purchase them, we would purchase them. Then next, because I, we wanna keep moving on, then then next week, we would bring forth. Because I don't have the authority to buy anything over ten thousand dollars.
Any concern?
No.
The temporary fix went by it last week.
Saw the big boulders in the ditch.
It didn't seem to, it didn't do much damage to the road, did it?
No.
I I was surprised, I was expecting a lot more.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh, this doesn't look as bad.
No, it, at first, when I went out there the week before, I thought, hey, this isn't too bad, but then when we walked to the other side. And you actually look up at the rocks, you start seeing the cracks and everything in there. And that's when I said, okay, let's order a bigger excavator, I don't want anybody near that stuff working underneath the drilling rocks and things like that. Because when they scale, they always scale from the top down. So the guy's always above what they're knocking down. But if you try to pull it with an excavator, you're pulling stuff down on you, and so we don't, I don't want, we're not gonna do that. But we will pull the the rocks out of the ditch, so if the ditch is deep, that's also a saving grace for us. Because if something does, does come down, it'll hit those barriers and go in that ditch. Okay, thank you. I think that's all we have.
If I could back up.
Okay, sure.
Uh. Was there a timeframe on the replacement? Of the jail bench?
I were supposed to.
I know you said you had a special order, right?
We do, um, I have not, I will. I, yeah, I'm sure, I will see when our delivery date is and let you know.
I would appreciate that, to know that that will be completed.
Well, you you said that's in a common area and under.
Yeah, yes. Yes. Yes, exactly. No, I will check on that and we'll bring that back to the board next.
No, I appreciate, just to close that work. Uh, I have, uh. Additional comment, I'd like to thank you and Rob last night for attending Wishram. I thought it was a really good meeting, twenty three people from Wishram showed up. They just, I'd like us more presence from the county. Probably say what would sell, I said. Whether it's signs or roads or.
That was good, it was good, very good meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was.
And I think it's good, you know, it sounds like we'll be having more of those.
I I want to attend more community meetings, you know, about, yeah.
I know I've been asked to go in March. Commissioner Andrews, I don't wanna speak for him, but, uh, up in Trout Lake, with that community council, talk about the park and.
Yeah. The Wishram one, did they, did they have some, some requests from from your department?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on signs, uh, water runoff. Uh, I made a list. Well, they're working with the beauty on the lights, so that.
Is it, is it, are any of those things, things that were kind of in your purview anyway, in that? Or is it all new stuff?
No.
Sometimes it's new, because like I explained to them, you know, we don't get out to everywhere. And, you know, some of the stuff, we don't have the money for, and some of the stuff, you know, be. Hundred percent honest, we probably should have, we missed. We had to change, shed the part, our people at the position, some of the stuff got missed. And so we are addressing that, like the signs, immediately this week. And we will take, I will, they will take a ride down to Wishram, look at the roads. We haven't done that, we don't get out as much as we. Hot holes, we will, um, and we'll talk more about the drainage issues. That, that's been there for a long time. So we will have more of a discussion about that, if you want a workshop or something.
Yeah, I think one of the bigger ones that came out was the speed limit on Highway fourteen, which we don't have for our control room, but we can help and load it.
We'll reach, we'll reach out to D O T and see if we can get something, they could do a study, so.
What is it through, uh, Wishram right now?
Sixty?
It's still sixty.
Yeah, it's still sixty, so that, a couple of individuals brought that up, and they've been working on it. And now with the new housing.
Yeah.
Uh, above. With school could be conflict. Uh, but I just appreciated Jeff and Rob coming going. Uh, more than happy to have them speak. Than me.
I appreciated your help too. I'm not gonna bottle Jeff anymore, though. Rob was the silver tongue, so.
No, I'd wait to go more detail later to do that, I'd be happy to. Any other questions? Upset?
Okay.
Well, thank you for your.
Thank you, thank you.
All with having workshops in the morning, so we can stay on time.
We will keep you on time.
Physical, maybe a little, hopefully a couple minutes early.
Well, here we are, right? One minute.
Thank you.
We'll sell that time to Rob.
All right. Ten fifteen, Department of Emergency Management. Mr. King.
Yes, good morning. So everybody got a copy of my, uh, report? I'd always like to start off with, do you have any questions? Before I start hitting the highlights. I'm gonna use up all my time talking, if you have questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have these smaller.
Go on the computer. Yeah, why don't you? I'm still having issues getting to the.
Understood, okay, well, it's good that I know that then. Um, do you wanna wait for those copies? I didn't.
No, please start.
When I make it, so, just for historical, when I make significant changes, because we submit these, you know. Almost a week in advance, uh, and in a twenty four seven operation like our department, as things change. Um, then I will bring printed copies for you with the changes, what I'm gonna present. But when they're only, you know, minor things changed, then I don't bring hard copies. Uh, for you, if that is still acceptable.
Right. Yes.
Okay. So, um, I'll start out, um, as always with public safety, well, sorry, consent agenda. Nothing on your consent agenda, uh, for today. Um, public safety radio system, uh, currently, there are no, um, user reported issues that are outstanding. Uh, with the exception of one that is, uh, I I put new in there. Um, we have the report from Fire District Two, Pickleton, um. Last summer, that they're having radio transmit and receive performance issues in a couple of spots out there. Um.
Is that from the repeater there at Pickleton or called Gotham?
We're still, yeah, it 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 would be the in between, the overlap in the two.
Okay.
We're still looking into that, because that's one thing. Um, little radio system education, in the simulcast system, there can be simulcast overlap. Where two or more signals from repeaters come in at the same signal strength, and it causes distortion. Keeps you from being able to hear properly, and that's only on the receive side. Uh, in this case, they're having difficulty receiving and transmitting. Had the techs out there, uh, once last fall, and, um, did some testing. We're not sure if it is radio frequency interference from. Substations or the solar installations, um, that put off, you know, the energy. Electricity puts off radio frequencies, people aren't aware of that. Um, or if it is the reflection of the radio frequencies from our towers. Off of. The wind towers and the solar panels and those things. We haven't drilled down on that yet, but I personally was in that area during the, um. Um, the big on fire, experienced that radio interference for myself that was being reported to me by the chief. So we're continuing to follow up on it. Until we can figure out exactly what it is, we won't know what we, if, and if so, what the solution might be. Unfortunately not.
And radio interference, that comes off just as static, or does it shorten the length of the signal toward?
It it can, it can be different forms, in this case, it was distorted audio, so you can't understand the transmission. Not just a blank static.
Sound good?
Yeah, it it, not at all, especially when you have sixty thousand acre wildfire that starts in that area. Have multiple days of fighting fire in those, because we've identified two specific locations, and they both have. Um. Infrastructure presence, it's not just out in the middle of nowhere. I won't, because there's been no determination, I will not pick up.
No, that's fine.
Any installations.
Kind of on your new subject list, have you checked other places in the United States to see what their experience is? Yeah.
I'm leaving that to our radio support professionals. That's under their purview to give me that report, but yes, it will be very interesting. Um, and so the first bullet point out there is the centerlink phone line. Uh, that is leftover from the winter storm in which that was actually affecting the Click It Tap Public Safety Radio Site. Now that dedicated phone line, T one line. From emergency management to Click It Tap. Um. So this is no longer affecting the radio system, but sentry links, uh, issues now. With their phone systems and service are still affecting the fire suppression system, the alarm for that in our building. And I'm working with both Public Works, uh, Buildings and Grounds. And I'm working with both Public Works, uh, Buildings and Grounds and Central Link Tech. Um, I think the technician actually has moved. Because they're so tired of hearing from me. All of our phone services, excuse me. Um. Off of any, uh, old legacy equipment and put us on new switches and everything at this office here. And in the infrastructure between my building and theirs, so that, um, no longer. Have, uh, any issues, even with the fire alarm, but that's still out there. That's why I left it on. But that's been a long process since. A year, year right now, last January is winter storm event. Um, under maintenance and repairs, um, on. Let's see, yeah, December fifteenth and sixteenth, um, the Indian Hill microwave dish failed. Um. I worked with the chairman of the board at the time, Commissioner Zoller, um, to make an emergency repair. That was done on, uh, December twenty-third. That dish had a compromised feed horn, so we had to have a tower crew, not just the technicians on the ground. And replace that feed horn. And thankfully, we have those parts. Or in our surplus that I've been able to get from other counties as they change out their radio systems. So we had no cost in parts, just in labor.
And that's in Hood River?
Indian Hill is east of Hood River and serves, yeah, Binge and White Sam primarily and, uh. You know, lower snowed out a lot.
Okay, I just Indian Hill, I didn't recognize.
Yeah, um, do you know where, um, if you look across from from Binge, you can see the the big clear cut on the. Ridge to the south. At the very peak of that ridge line is where our radio site sits.
Okay, thank you. I I just, I I didn't recognize the name.
Yes, no. It it is a. Very extensive wireless site. Everybody. Has it, the Coast Guard has satellite or excuse me, a microwave and everybody is up there. Prime location. Um, and at that same side, unfortunately, um, just this last Saturday, we had a failure of the road channel radio. And, um, we're still troubleshooting that. We haven't gotten reports from the road department. They're having trouble communicating, but it's throwing a. A failure code and we don't know if it's just in the alarm system or if that radio was actually having a power supply issue. So today, as we speak, the technicians are on their way up there to figure that out, fix it. Um. Still waiting to hear from the insurance company about whether they're gonna cover the Indian Hill generator, uh, that was lost during the, uh, microwave hill. Fire. Um. And I just checked with, uh. Uh, HR director and he still has not heard an update on that. That winter storm damage, um, projects for more resiliency in our internet connections and so forth is ongoing. Um. I know we just had an outage yesterday, but that was not the internet connection. That was a different cause. We do now have the, and this is for IT to go, but we. We do now have the redundant internet service providers, which is great. Primary comes directly into our building. Um, so we had limited interruptions in nine one dispatch yesterday because of that. Lost the internet with the county's network. But we maintain the intergovernmental network and the nine one S E net and everything else. Still functioning, so that was. That was best case scenario, if we have to have some sort of an outage.
Yeah, that's positive.
Yeah. Um. Let's see, you did the annual report from our tier one, so that's the lowest level, um, was. Was completed, although it was much delayed, uh, so I'm just not getting a chance to look at that and go over it. However. From our conversations as they were doing those annual preventative maintenance work, uh, we went from three to five sites that had antenna issues down to just one now. So, uh, I'll be following up on that. But that was a good bit of news. We still haven't had time to get back to the cellular service providers outreach project that, um, I was trying to facilitate. I will as time allows, um. Radio site lease agreements, um. The county has fully executed the Juniper Point, um, sublease agreement with Blue Mountain Internet. Um, we're waiting on them to sign and send it back. Um, but the good news is I was very happy to successfully negotiate with them for. As part of their compensation for the sublease at our Juniper site. Was internet, um, service at. Most of our radio sites to facilitate, uh, this, the security cameras and our access. And ability to use security cameras at those remote radio sites. So that was also a year-long process. Get them to agree to provide that service, but in the end. We worked it out. I think I've talked, uh, about the. Radio site wildfire fuels reduction. I think I mentioned in my last update, but still working with the DNR, uh, flat top, potential timber sale up there. To to get all that. Combustible material clear away from the site, especially that. Um, basically plastic. Um. Monopole tower. Which would melt over like a candle if we had a forest fire up there, so. That is one of my top priorities to work with the DNR on that. But we're very happy with what they did at the Diamond Gap site and clearing out all the way around that. Up into cutting down trees, which they were originally. Um, just. Uh. Offering to brush out around the site and not cut down any trees. Once they got there and saw the situation. And now they have their AI. Smoke detection camera system co-located with us, uh, because that site is the county, the PUD. And, um, the internet provider, Sound, that are joint partners in that site. Once the DNR got there and saw what the hazards were. For a wildfire and it included their infrastructure now. I believe they took it much more seriously and cut down several trees. One of which was like leaning right over the, uh, shelter.
Yeah, they didn't seem to take out any more than they had to when you first put the sign in.
Correct, yeah, yeah, they left one right on offense. But all those things are, you're coming to fruition, getting solved.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to getting a flat top, because right now that is our most vulnerable site to wildfire. Uh, and we've restarted the PUD's wildfire camera project, um, at a limited basis. Uh, this is the time of the year to get all those leases and applications things done, so hopefully they can start working on those later in the year. But. Trying to work through that process to get them access to our sites. So they can use our infrastructure to put those detection cameras in. Provide for safety of PUD's infrastructure as well as public safety, because I'm insisting. That emergency management have access to those cameras. And it's a, that's a collaborative.
Yeah.
Through a grant process with, uh, Oregon Hazard Lab. Oregon State University and the PUD. It's their project, but, uh, we're helping as much as we can. Now, anybody from the PD that's listening, I'll apologize because last year went sideways. Got basically nothing done. We were hoping to get three sites installed last year. We're hoping to get those same three sites installed this year. Just didn't, didn't work out. When the wildfire started in July. We lost the ability to. To do anything.
So we don't have any. Fire lookouts like, like. Do we have any Jackma?
We don't have any manned.
Oh, man.
Fire lookouts. Uh, there's the camera systems. Yakima County has a wildfire detection, smoke detection camera systems. Uh, but. And on our security cameras, I'm installing them in ways that give us, um. Horizon line of sight, so we not only can provide for a period of the, of the shelter and the. The secured fenced area, the, and the reason this got on our radar is the. Go Gotham site, East County, right on the Benton County line, all the copper was stolen from that site. Uh, and no alarms were set off. They didn't open the building door where we have alarmed. They they took all the copper from the grounding for lightning strikes or off the fence and off the tower. And just be, just as it entered the building. And and took it and nobody knows when they did it. Could have been weeks or months before my tech was there and found it that way. Now, we have sites like that. Alarm in such a way that if somebody cuts the ground, we know. As well as putting in security cameras at the sites, so we can identify them. But there was also, uh, not a site of ours, but a site that. Oregon Radio Project uses, um. I don't know who else is there, but it's up above Roosevelt. Um, that was also vandalized then and. They stole it in the same manner in that same year, so. It's a problem and we use grant funds to get all the security cams, but. Like I said, I've had them installed on the towers in such a way that we can see the horizon as much as the vegetation allows. We get a call of a s- uh, fire smoke and we'll log into those cameras. And try and help the responders pinpoint that location without having to. Drive all over snow and walk back and figure out which road gets them to. That fire location.
But this forest, like I I know even, even the manned sites in Oregon. Have been updated with cameras and they're not manned anymore, but are there any that we don't? Done it, click done.
No, not even in the National Forest in Scamani County. That I'm aware of. The DNR camera at our Diamond Gap site is the first wildfire detection. Resource that I'm aware of, it's, it's anywhere near, I can't remember. And then, like I said, this, this PUD project. Open to do three sites in the first phase, and then I think it was another two or three in the second phase. It's all grant fund. And that is a automated system where, uh, artificial intelligence. The camera is moving in a three sixty, or actually at some sites they have two cameras. One eighty each, and if the AI detects what it believes to be smoke, it then sends a notification to, um. A monitoring, uh, center and then human looks at it, says, yep, this is smoke, not dust, not. Fog, haze, whatever, uh, and and then calls the appropriate, uh, nine one dispatch center for that jurisdiction. So. The first of that kind is what the DNR put a diamond gap and then the PUD's gonna put several. Um. Yeah, any other questions? I can give you as much or as little detail as.
No, no.
I noticed I was on the schedule for an hour. I didn't intend to take it all, but I will if necessary.
Well.
I mean, that's up to you. You're in the box.
That's right.
No, no, that was promised. I will, I will stay here until you tell me you're done with this.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah. And so as far as those site security camera projects, all six of those cameras are installed. We're still working to get internet to them. Two sites have internet connections at this time. Um, the Juniper site camera had water intrusion, found that out same day they went to fix, uh, Indian Hill. I have to give day wireless technician, uh, Brad Briggs, big kudos, because when they got them with that fix in Indian Hill early. He said, hey, the camera at Juniper's not working. We got the tower crew. Let's go over there and see what's going on. They went up tower, the camera housing. Their weatherized housing cameras in was full of water, like half gallon of water. Um, so they took it down and are gonna do whatever it takes to get it fixed or replaced. And I gotta put it back up. So we had access to that camera, we could see. Images, we had internet and everything, and then that happened, so about two weeks after.
I say, see, see fish floating?
Yeah. Couldn't see anything. It was like, why? Okay, so that's radio system. Uh, any questions about any of the radio system? Went on to nine one one, uh, call taking and public safety radio dispatching. Staffing, as you know, always, uh, one of our highest priorities and the biggest challenge. I am very happy to report that as of January first, we have, uh, our newest. Training has completed initial training with, uh, Gasner. Uh, that, uh, is a full-time partner. And we moved her from the casual and training position to a full-time position. And she is a full partner, taking shifts, um. That has allowed Chief Operations to come out of that schedule full-time plus. And get back to his primary duties. So that is a great benefit.
How, how long has she been full-time?
Since January one.
January.
Yeah, she came out of training.
Good job.
Yeah, yep. Thank you to us for her, that's a great accomplishment, as we know. We're gonna have about a half to two thirds of our trainees wash out. Um. A bit of disappointing news is that one of our comms officers in training, which was a, uh, call it a semi-lateral. She had dispatched for military, uh, military base for the Marines for about a year. Um, she had to, um. Uh, resign as a full-time in training and the request to be a casual, she's had to. Take some time off for personal reasons. Uh, she still wanted to be listed as casual and intends to come back and complete her training and work. As needed after that, so we'll re-evaluate when she comes back as mayor chief. But that was a great hope that she could be trained in two or three months instead of six months. And so that was a little bit of a hit to our morale. But we're gonna make up for it because we received an application for past communications officer. Um. We've scheduled an interview, um, February fifth. Gonna do that even while I'm on vacation to not, not slow down that process in any way. Uh, her move date from Alaska is sometime in March and the promise to start April. First part of April. And again, she's somebody that has worked for us. Uh, four years ago she left, she worked for us for a couple of years. So she has all that experience. Uh, she's continued to work in the. Legal side of things, do a lot of legal paperwork, dispatch as well. So we're anticipating, like I said, another three months, that person has a rehire.
Any training required?
Full HR level. Yeah, I've been told by HR. Yeah, another two or three months to train her before she can be a full partner, instead of the six months, two or three months. But I've been told I can, I can treat her as a rehire instead of a new hire.
Yes.
So that's our plan there. And I already mentioned the chief of ops is no longer in the schedule and back to primary duties. Um, of course, that'll change if no faults, no misconceptions, but, uh. There will be overtime. For his position now that it's no longer salary by the state mandate. Um, operations on the nine one side, um. Working on Motorola Flex, the CAD system, GIS mapping, all of that. With the help of IT and Public Works GIS team, make sure we make that transition successfully. And see if there's any way to collaborate with other GIS needs in the county. Keep from paying for multiple licenses if we don't need them. Um, the slug, Spillman Local Users Group, um, which is our CAD system.
Thank, thank you for.
Yeah, Spillman is is the name of the company that.
And on the acronym.
Yes.
It's just slug, just.
Uh, we may bear into point to, to both of the public and the new board members. Yeah, in emergency management in general and public safety. Uh, when I started. Think there was, I was given a spreadsheet of over. Three thousand acronyms. And so, and mo- and some of them, one acronym had multiple, uh. Definitions, so. I will do my best, and if I ever throw out an acronym that you don't know, stop me and, uh. And make me tell you what it is. I apologize.
Oh, no, you can say what it was. I appreciate that.
Uh, so, uh, the chief of ops is back to work on those things for our users, uh, mainly the law enforcement users that. Uh, to police departments and getting them. Some services that they have paid for through. The company Spillman, specifically White Santa PD purchasing a module for a mobile, um, that. Uh, and it's nothing, it's not, nothing we use, but as the owners of that. Software and that application and the server that they access for their record management system. And for the way they do business out on the road now, you know. And for the way they do business out on the road now, you know. The officers hardly ever have to go back into the, into an office, they work out of their vehicles with their laptops and. The functionality that this module gives the officers on the road is greatly improved their efficiencies and effectiveness. I'm being told this is why White Salmon made that investment, they're the first ones in our county to actually make that investment. G P D and the sheriff's office Scott estimates, um, it wasn't cheap, I think for White Salmon was over fifty thousand. The estimate for the sheriff's office is over eighty thousand, um, so. Goldell P D and Sheriff's Office haven't taken any action to purchase that for themselves. But we did facilitate Benjamin White Salmon P D. Getting that capability and there's lots of things that we had to do on our side to make that work. And we're continuing to work with them to make sure that they have all the functionality they need.
Can you go more into detail onto what, what that provides them? Advantages?
So not, not being a user of it, have, you know, limited understanding, but it gives the officer in the field. Um, the ability to manage and, and use that system. Uh, and for their reports, that one of the things was a uh. Uh, their workflow for. Uh, approving reports, so by supervisor, so the officer to the sergeant. Um, and up to the chief and all of those proofing of everything that they do. They can do that on their M D T in their vehicle and. It's much streamlined, so the efficiencies is one thing that they like all the way from the officer clear to the office and the clerk in the office.
Does that give them background information?
The officers have the ability to run people both in our system and with the state system, if they choose, they typically use dispatch for that. And dispatch has more capabilities than the officer on the road. That's something they typically don't do when they're in the field, they might do that during an investigation or follow up and so on. But.
And then probation and the courts are moving to spill them to upgrading.
Uh, they've always had that.
Yeah, they. So they're all more coordinated.
Yeah, and we've been working with all of them, cause some, some of the users. The courts juvenile, they have like a read only and make any changes, right, that they can see. Who's in the system, what their statuses are, those things, but they can't change any data. Uh, and then other users, you said the courts probation. Clerk's office, they, they all have access to it and have different permissions based on what they need and. Some of that's governed by the criminal justice information security rules as well. State Patrol and the F B I that we have to follow. Lot of policies and security that we have to abide by, it's not over our own choose. Yeah, which is absolutely appropriate. We need to make sure that nobody either accidentally or with nefarious intent. Gets this information on. Histories and so on. Yeah, but yeah. The spilling system or Motorola bought them out and now it's called Flex. That system that my department owns and manages, it's used by several departments in the county as well as. The sheriff's office, I shouldn't say departments, departments and offices as well as the both of these departments. Currently at this time, just push data out to the fire agencies and the E M S district. They don't actively use the system, they don't have M D Ts, laptops. That they access our system like law enforcement folks do, uh, that is probably coming in the future. They need to make a significant investment to be able to do that. Right now, when we close out a fire or a medical call. Um, or a search and rescue call, the data for that call gets pushed out to an email for that agency that was. Responsible for that call, they have all the information they need for their reports internally into the state, so. So that's all stuff we're trying to manage under that side of things and like I said, chief of operations, that's under his. Um, purview, and so he's gonna get back to all that stuff, all those projects we put on hold for about. That's an established situation. Make sure I get down to the emergency management stuff, so I'll skip some of this. Um, one other thing under nine one one, uh, communications officer statewide. That certification process has been finalized by the state, so now we have a state standard established for. The training of a communications officer. And at the state level, because unlike our, some dispatches, they have, excuse me, some communication centers. Have separate nine one one call takers, that's all they do and others, all they do is dispatch over the radio. Uh, sometimes you're reading separate agencies, separate buildings, and sometimes there's dispatchers for just. Uh, law enforcement and, and separate ones for fire. So there's a different standard for nine one one call takers and a different standard for. Dispatchers. At this time, our belief is that our in-house training that we've always been giving, um. Meets all of the new state standards and for certification, so. Everybody that we have that is currently certified even under our own system, our program. Should be grandfathered in, including the one that just got out of training, separate. Just be our new trainees that we either have to. Justify to the state that our training program meets their standard, or we have to send them to an academy, which is the next step the state's trying to set up. Yes, I see the look on your face, I have.
I, yeah, I didn't say anything.
I have the same misgivings, um, about that, so we're gonna try and continue to do it in-house ourselves and uh, and meet their standard. Instead of have to send our people away for weeks or months.
Thank you for working on this, that, that.
And it's unfortunate.
It, it's good to have the train and we need the train.
Yep.
But.
And I'm gonna.
When you start sending people out for a long period of time, what it does to your department.
It makes that staffing issue even greater.
Yeah.
Um, it takes the weight off of people having to train internally. But it has a whole host of other issues.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I did, I, I need to give credit where credit is due, right? I'm the director, however. Phil, chief of ops, he's on vacation, on a cruise somewhere in the ocean. Well deserved, he, he has a. He should take a lot of credit for that as well as Hannah Walter, she is uh. One of our leads and our training coordinator and she has worked diligently for years. Uh, she just had her seven year anniversary. To continue to develop and improve our training program and create that training. Manual and our policies and procedures to make sure that those folks are up to the standard. And we don't have a bunch of ketchup when the state comes out and says, you gotta meet this standard now, or send them to us so we can train. Yeah, so, uh, my whole team deserves that credit.
Oh, thank the team for us.
I will, thank you. Uh, we'll continue to participate not only in the state peer support team, um, but also in our local. Peer support teams with sheriff's office and our own department, that's a, it's a big deal. On going to keep our folks healthy on the job. Any questions about nine one one dispatch? Emergency management program, um, you can read there, we've successfully updated the comprehensive emergency management plan. For the county and it's five-year cycle, that's a mandate to, to stay eligible for our grant funding under the. Emergency management program grant, um, which is base funding for the emergency management program. Um, we are. Behind on getting started with the update, the review and update of the hazard mitigation plan and the community wildfire protection plan. Uh, we had intended to start those processes last year. And that includes all the emergency responders and other community stakeholders, P U D. Um, whole host of people, conservation districts when it comes to the hazard mitigation plan, hospitals, all that stuff, it's a county-wide plan. Both of those are, so we're gonna try and uh, hold um. Kickoff meetings for both of those reviews, planning, update processes at the same time, because a lot of those players are the same and. Except. Except one day, one time, both and do one and the folks that don't. You know, don't have an interest or don't have a part in that, uh, the next one, let them go, because the wildfire protection planners. Spins down the stakeholders, so hopefully that will work and cause everybody to have less meetings. And streamline this process, that's our. Uh, still working on the uh, standard response protocol program with county and city employees, um. This is gonna be new to the two of you guys, um. And I can get into that in more detail by the time probably, um. But all of the schools have moved to this program, so we have standard terminology, um, standard actions. That all the schools are gonna take when an active threat is detected. Things to some action based on a report of an active threat, it used to be that every school was calling it something different, you know, lockdown, soft lockdown. All these different terminologies. Standardize that across the county now, and I'm pushing to get it standardized, county offices and city offices, because. Our responders, law enforcement, fire, E M S, need to be on that same page, because when they respond, if. Whatever um, management is of the facility they're responding to. Uses different terminology than the responders are. It gets messy and, and there's conflict under pressure, you know. So all the responders have agreed to use it, schools have agreed to use it, um, and hopefully I'll come to you with presentation. Sooner rather than later, to start teaching that to all of our employees, well, about city employees. And then we're gonna reach out to larger industries, uh, places like hospitals, the P U Ds. Get everybody on the same plane.
And is, is this a federal, is, is this or?
This is private, this is uh, what is it, uh, it's kinda funny, it, uh. We love you guys, something like that is the website and the foundation, it came out of. Either set of parents or a group of parents, I can't remember, um, that was affected by school violence. And they started this program and it's spread nationwide now. And not only for schools, but like I said, government, facilities and private sector as well now. It just makes good sense, we're not talking, using the same verbiage and the same definitions. When we have to work together, it's everything more complicated.
Yeah.
Especially in those situations, for high stress. Um, and we have started printing that because we ran this through the safety committee already. They should be bringing it to you or E U and then, um, on the back of the employee badges, so your new badges. Should have the S P R definitions on it. Trying to get ahead of it. And you're, you're just happy to have your name on it, is that what you?
I just could get into the building, I'm excited.
Hopefully Frank got your name.
Getting my computer back.
And so on the winter storm, to uh, try and catch up. So Frank sent me an email just before I walked in here, new development as of today. All this winter storm projects that we've submitted to FEMA for reimbursement at seventy-five percent of our cost, um. We have two new A nineteen, which is uh, which what we fill out and send to the state emergency management division. Uh, they requested we do that for these two projects because FEMA has approved that, so basically. Set funding is guaranteed and as soon as they get our A nineteen, the checks in mail, um, and this is. Is exactly a year from the time of the event, this is unheard of, where FEMA make those approvals and to get reimbursed. Through the state at this rate of speeds, we're very happy about that, and I have to give credit to Frank. For, you know, just continuing to push on FEMA to get this through the process.
You're saying twelve months, this is a quick.
That's unheard of, it's not quick.
What's, what's? Yeah.
Two to three years before you get any resolution.
Need of government. So FEMA makes up. What percentage, it does the state make up? A certain percentage, when I dealt with FEMA in the past, FEMA would do like seventy-five, the state would do like fifteen percent. And ten percent was on the local end.
In this case, it's, it's the seventy-five percent from FEMA, the state's not kicking any.
Okay.
Yeah, sometimes.
Seventy-five percent more than.
Yes, so sometimes the, the.
Okay.
Typically, it's uh, seven FEMA. Or the state would maybe pick up twelve and a half percent, something like that, so, but this time, the state didn't put any.
Nope, that, that's fine, I just.
And these are all reimbursements, so, well, I can't say, because these two are both public works projects. We're guaranteed to receive now the hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and change for the Cook Road repairs at Public Works. Um, it, project is gonna do. And let's see, so the jail generator replacement was approved for twenty-eight thousand and seven hundred roughly. Those are the two that we will be getting uh, reimbursements for first. And let's go wait, total was like eight hundred thousand, I think, uh, that we applied for and that included county, uh. City of Benjin for wastewater treatment plant damages, uh, Skyline Hospital. And in the county side, it was the public safety radio system and the public works road damage, sprinkler systems, generators, those things. So, yeah, there's, it's a pretty big benefit, and that doesn't include all the P U D, the P U D submitted separately. To the state through FEMA, so. But yeah, that's, we're very happy that, that's happened and that's happened in such a short time. Um, the other thing, I'll stay brief, Mount Adams volcanic activity, we're having a. Meeting to, to review and update the Mount Adams, Mount St. Helen's coordination plan. Plans put in place after the nineteen eighty eruption of Mount St. Helen's, uh, it hasn't been reviewed in my ten years here. It's a state document, it involves several counties and all kinds of jurisdictions, um. And it's federal and tribal agencies, that meeting is on February nineteenth, and I'm also continuing to push. On support to develop a public alert and warning. Plan, then a system uh, for the White Salmon River Range and the Glenwood Valley in the event of a law. So we have a major landslide on the mountain, you know, it will impact those two communities. Depending on what side of the mountain's on, of course, and the Trollick Valley is the most at risk.
And that was discussed, been dis- being discussed at the Trollick Community Council and.
I've been working with them for years, there's new technology uh, out and the forest service is still. And the permitting process for acoustic detection, so it, it. It highly sensitive microphones that pick up the movement of the material on the surface of the mountain. And at the point it hears something that sounds like a landslide, it sends a notification to the. The Cascade Volcano Center and then that falls downstream. Again, insisting that. Not only when they get the notification, because there's such little uh, response time, like warning. In this case for Trout Lake, that that alarm goes off in our dispatch center, we can take some action. But USGS and the Volcanic Observatory folks, they don't want the legal liability of false. Uh, activations or false night notifications for liability reasons, you know, you. Tell people to evacuate, the bar's coming, and, and anybody gets hurt, you're on the hook, it's false alarm, right? My position is that our responsibility is to the safety of those people first and foremost. We will vet any of those alarms that go off, but we have to err on the side of caution, because they're only gonna have. Twelve to fifteen minutes notice to get five hundred feet or higher in elevation above the Trollick Dam.
Especially with the recent fires. The vegetation loss.
Correct. Yep, and and the increase in seismic activity, September and October. So, all things that are on our.
So that that takes off standard avalanches somehow, it it can tell the.
Yes, well, when when the data is analyzed then, so it sends a notification, I heard something that could be. Uh, just like the fire, uh the smoke detections says, uh, you know, this. This could be, then a human evaluates that data further. So we send out the alarm. And we evaluate that data specifically, and if it's a false alarm, then we rescind that notification. But unlike some things like tsunami, you know, you might have an hour notice. Okay, how far off the coast the earthquake is, this situation is not that. Fifteen to twenty minutes tops.
Speaking of fifteen minutes.
Yep, I'm over time. Oh.
No, as long as you're aware of that.
I I am, man. I don't know who's up next. I don't see anybody here, but. Okay.
Well, yes, fifteen minutes, right?
Yep. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, fifteen.
Fourteen now.
You're good.
Excellent. So uh I'll jump down training and exercises. One thing I wanted to make here and point out was that we are planning for and dates and times to be determined, but uh another. National Incident Management System Overview, NMS. We didn't define that acronym for you. And this is trained specifically for elected officials, appointed officials, executives. Uh, for city and county governments. Uh, we put this on uh in March of twenty twenty, just before COVID started. And um. We had all three mayors and a uh one elected official from the county and two directors. I'm hoping we get much better participation in this training and that um. There's a way that all three of you can attend this to know what your role is. Uh, when we have a declaration of emergency and we activate the EOC and so on. That's what this training is for.
And that, what's the date on that?
Uh, we have not decided.
Okay.
Sometime um later this spring, in that timeframe, before fire season again. But.
How, in in the past, how do you, how do you send that out to the directors and electeds um?
We use the email groups.
Okay. It's for.
Yep.
To maximize the number of people potentially to be there, is it the? What time? What is the service that does, everyone can kind of chime in on dates? Yes.
Yeah, well, I could use a doodle pole to find the best date and time. Yes, I'm a fan of doodle poles. I love it.
Okay.
Uh, and that that gives me, if you're not familiar, that gives me. Not only how many people in total can make it for that day and time, but it gives me specific people and and you can. Set that meeting for key people's attendance, as well as the most, the largest number of people.
Yes.
I will do that if.
We'll watch for your doodle.
If you're okay with it.
Because on 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 the Zoom call with the emergency, when when I was on there with Frank, I mean, they. They went into detail how that there hasn't been hardly anyone from the county that's done it. And and they were, they went into specifics of what happens in some of these emergencies. When you, when you step into that realm, everyone has that has a role.
That's correct.
And if they're not trained in that, it uh not be.
OJT. Yeah, real fast.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yep, something we tried, we would like to avoid, but uh, yeah, the key players um in. In wildfires and winter storms, you know, are pretty well versed in it. But during COVID, there was a lot of folks that had to catch up. Some, you know, major incident. The thing that in in emergency management that we've been preparing for. For years already now is the Cascadia Subduction Zone seismic event. So the earthquake off the coast that would. Take everything flat, tsunami comes in, wipes everything two miles inland on the coast, out to the ocean and sends it to Japan. Um, so what does it look like when everything west of the Cascades is is does not function anymore? And what does that mean for us uh as a state and individual counties and so on? We've done many exercises playing that out in the in the thinking that. That is a catastrophic incident that is near worst case scenario as we can imagine. And what would that mean? So if we plan and prepare for that event. Then we should be prepared for most anything else because all the same things apply. We need to provide, you know, for people and all their needs, right? Food, water, shelter, communications. It doesn't matter whether it's wildfire that's taking down all the. Infrastructure and as in the case of Los Angeles right now displaced. Tens of thousands of people um. How we facilitate their needs in that scenario, still the same logistical challenge. And the same uh legal challenges. So that's what the things we've been trained. And uh when it gets to that size and it's, everybody is gonna have to be involved in that process.
Yeah.
Planning department, building department, inspections, roads. Yeah, so all stuff that's, yeah, on our radar, we're all contenders. We'd like folks to come and join us to figure out their role in that, um if it happens on our watch. Uh, various trainings were uh have given or are giving uh. The amateur radio emergency services uh Winterfield Day is coming up on uh the twenty-fifth. So if anybody is interested in learning about amateur radio and uh. How that works in an emergency or just as a hobby, I even go to Clickatack County Fairgrounds at nine o'clock on January twenty-fifth that participate. And uh, we can sign you up as a volunteer. Uh, and then all the grants are listed there. You have any questions, let me know. Um. There's no real earth shattering things except for what applied to the winter storms and other things I've already talked about. Those are all grants that we have in process right now and are working on. Um. And then unless there's any questions on the emergency medical program.
The field day for the um.
Yes.
It says January twenty-third and twenty-fifth, but it says Clickatack County Fairgrounds, nine to three. Is it on both those days?
Uh, no, twenty-three is the prep day.
Okay.
The actual event that the public can attend will be on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, you should put that in.
And I reached out to some groups, I think. I think I got confirmation that there'll be at least six people.
That'd be great. And uh I got good feedback. Thank you for attending the volunteer uh monthly meeting and training. That that those folks enjoy that. I regret that I couldn't attend that one, but. Yes, that uh, that helps them. Uh, so lastly, uh January Employee of the Month is Communications Officer Caroline Knops. Saw the Facebook post, our certificate outlines, you know, her accomplishments and what her. Fellow teammates say about her to make her a valued team member, and we congratulate her for her work for this. She's one of our newest communications officers as well. And then Hannah Walters reached her seven years of service, graduated her for that with the certificate. Facebook post uh just this month. And then that other guy we won't talk about.
He made it ten years?
Congratulations, yeah.
And how many years before that, up to that point?
Uh, ten years in this position.
Yeah.
And um, yeah, in emergency services, first starting out as a SAR volunteer, uh that was in two thousand and one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Any questions or additional questions?
You'll you'll be gone, you'll be.
I would rather not.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, there's no additional questions. I think I will. We will take a sixty-minute recess. Be back here at eleven fifteen for the next presentation. Alright, we'll call workshop back to order. Uh, Scott is up today, so Lori's.
I'm here.
Gets to fill in.
Yes, yes, happily. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, maybe we should have took the break after your presentation.
I talked for a long time.
Uh, maybe mine was on the solar advisory committee.
Okay.
When was the plan of starting that process? I I know, I thought Scott said later in January, but.
Uh, the, the original, or, well, okay, there's been many original plans. I, they're going to be meeting on Wednesdays, and I think the latest plan. Because today you're talking about the solar committee, and then I believe it would be next Tuesday you officially appoint them. So I believe the soonest they may have their first meeting is, I think it's the twenty-ninth. I don't have a calendar.
No, they're, I believe we're making appointment today.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, okay, so.
They, it is in our consent.
Okay, well, the meeting last Thursday, you were.
Twenty-nine, close to.
The planning commission is in the consent, not about this.
I thought.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We haven't seen a resolution for this yet.
Or I think later on you have.
The resolution.
Planning Commission, but I think.
Thank you.
On Thursday, last Thursday, we're holding off on a couple of things in the solar committee to then. All about today and then sign the thing next Tuesday.
That way they'll make it in time for their first meeting.
Which I believe is the twenty-ninth or thirtieth, whatever the the fifth Wednesday of the month. I believe is when they plan to have their kickoff meeting.
No, yeah, you're correct. That's my apologies. When is the kickoff meeting?
Nope, it's not set in stone, but I believe it's the twenty-ninth.
Okay, that's, that's what I, I, I love her. I have the twenty-nine.
Okay. And then this morning, we, during the last hour or so, did get a confirmation from the sheriff's office that um. Their involvement with the committee, it would be um Sergeant Joe Riggers and Carmen Knops would be on the committee. Representing the sheriff's office. And then another conversation this morning, David Kavanaugh with Environmental Health. He was going to get a hold of Scott, then Scott's not here, so.
Okay.
I won't say a hundred percent, but he's said he should, would be available.
That's important.
Yes.
Like, yes, oh, it's good.
And 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 so Jeff, Bob, Paris and Lynn, those weren't on ex officio. Last Thursday, right? Those were the ones that were added?
I believe so. And I think what was.
Was, Paris was.
Paris, I was on now.
Yeah, Paris.
Kind of getting the various county departments.
Yeah, I don't.
That is the Boggsonger Designee, so.
And David Kavanaugh.
Oh, David, yeah.
And then I believe from here between the commissioner's office and planning. Next Tuesday, we would have the official resolution or paperwork for you all to sign. Are so inclined to.
Yeah, we need the form.
So will we discuss this now? Or? Or is it, this after, this afternoon, we have to make a motion to approve this to get it on for next Tuesday?
Um, no, I don't believe you need to make a.
No, we can just.
Motion, but.
I'll probably have to put on the consent agenda, and I'm happy if you want to discuss it this afternoon and.
No, no, it all looks good. I just did not.
That looks good to me.
May.
Procedural.
Nor- normally, what what I'll do is put things on the consent agenda. And if one pulls something off and discuss it separately from the consent agenda, that's great.
Okay.
Uh, but normally I'll just have department heads put stuff on the consent. So if there's not a lot of discussion, we'll spend time on each individual item. But feel free, anything you see on the consent you want to pull off. You know, just we'll make that motion and then we can have that separate discussion. I'm more than happy to have any discussion.
And then a discussion for me about, just for clarification, and um. I'm always interested in planning commission and I love the work they do. I really think it's a great board. Uh, but being in this position, you become someone different, and I saw you wrote down the date and time for planning commission. It's probably not advisable that we attend those meetings because then it has to come here to vote to you. And you want to keep yourself separate.
Yeah, you could go back and review the record when needed.
But we really, it's it's really a hard way to work.
That's good, right?
It is complicated, even when we need to have some discussions, it it just, it just seems to happen.
And part of that with planning commissions, since they make recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. When we put together a packet of information, you'll have lots, lots of information. You'll have their meeting minutes, sometimes they're still draft, but we'll have their decision. There's the staff review that went to them, that includes all the applications, and of course, all the comments as well. So we'll, we'll provide you, probably. And sometimes more than you want, because just for example, the end of last week, we sent out to the planning commission members a. Staff report and stuff for the critical areas ordinance, two hundred and thirty-seven pages. So you can well imagine, hey, by the time they get done and make a recommendation, your packet will be larger.
Also, are those normally a red line versions?
Um.
The show?
Yes, with with the um updates to ordinances and stuff.
Yeah.
And for example, along with that, next Tuesday with our planning commission meeting. We have the public hearing on the flood damage prevention ordinance, so. That document that we sent to them is is redlined as well.
And the only reason I ask, because I looked at the critical area ordinance, ordinance online.
Okay.
And I did not see a red line version, or somebody commenting, could just go down the.
I.
This was changed or this was changed.
Right.
This isn't, so do I need to spend as much time?
Well, and the the critical areas.
The other one was.
Right, the critical area of ordinance that's online, there's been so many versions because. Was September of.
Yes.
Twenty-three, where we had the first public hearing on it, then due to other things and.
And we went, we went through a phase in those years where we weren't redlining things. So then we had a little bit of discussion and said, no, we want red line versions.
Okay.
I just asked because we put out a document for beautiful to comment on. And sometimes it's a lot easier, for me it is. If I go down and see what the red lines are, then I definitely need to comment on these that are changing.
And we're working on our website, but there is a separate tab for critical areas update, and that'll take you back. Well, there's the original.
And I think.
Critical areas and then all the work that went on from like twenty-one through. Through twenty-three, twenty-four, because after we held initial public hearing in November of twenty-three. Then went into the solar. Prohibition and a few other things, so it was November of. Actually, that was September of twenty-two, so, so November of. Twenty-three is when planning commission picked it back up.
Okay.
And that's when they started red line.
Prior to that, they weren't red. Correct, and then we had the November, then we had the Bochi had left, and I was here, then Scott came. And thankfully Scott's here, so in March when he got here, we were still working with. The graph critically, and anyway, long story short, by God, next Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday, we're having a public hearing. And I think of you, I have two boxes. You thought my office was a mess.
No, 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 that that's fine. I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, we have lots of.
Question, when I just went to look at the site.
Right.
To look at changes and I just had the expectations of a red line and that's not what I see, and that, that's all.
We'll get you a tree or two worth of.
Well, I can sell some trees for that paper.
Yeah.
So, no, I appreciate it.
Oh, no, you're you're welcome, and I should have a better detailed timeline.
Well.
But it it's lengthy. Yes, most definitely. But it it's lengthy, yes, most definitely.
And the documents been beat up.
And the public hearing on Tuesday, a week from today.
Yes.
Is. Critical areas ordinance or?
Um, actually, there's two public hearings that night for our planning commission, it starts at six o'clock here, there's the Zoom option as well. First off, after you know, the roll call and review of minutes, et cetera, um, will be the public hearing on the flood damage prevention ordinance. That will basically adopt the new FEMA maps. And we do need to have that public hearing, planning commission needs to make a recommendation to get that to the county commissioners. Do have it adopted by February fourteenth, or we'll potentially lose our flood insurance for Clickat County. And then right after that hearing, which we actually have only gotten one comment on the flood damage prevention ordinance. Then at right after that, we'll start the critical areas public hearing. And that's the importance of having a full planning commission.
Lot going on.
Yes.
That was.
Like I could say more, I I believe this afternoon on your, you'll have the actual. Resolutions appoint this planning commissioners or reappoint and a couple other. So, anything else?
Good.
All right.
No.
Thank you.
It's good to be able to hear from you, you're awful quiet when Scott's here.
Oh, well, I'll let him talk, I'll just go back to my corner of the world. Do my job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I should have waited.
Okay, we have three minutes.
Uh, actually, fifteen.
Oh, we do.
Yeah. Well, we just uh, once the treasurer gets here, this this item up.
Yeah. About even just for my education too, listening in on Zoom for meetings like that, for educational purposes, as long as you're not speaking or anything, should you avoid that too? Or like being in the public hearing, but not.
And and in the past, I avoided them until.
Till it came to your desk.
To the board. Just so there's no conflict. I mean, if you're asking me, I'd say I would avoid it. Until it comes to us, because you're gonna be judging or making a decision.
Yeah.
What, are we gonna have a public meeting or are we gonna have a public hearing? You're gonna make that determination. On both of them.
Right.
Is that all the signature pictures there today?
Oh, oh, no.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, we got.
Only guys gotta wait.
Yeah, once you guys vote, we got set.
Okay.
It'll be a little while.
Well, that's why I, yeah, I misspoke.
I thought, wow.
Well, well.
You better.
It was pretty simple when it said we had twenty items on the consent agenda, it's like, oh, I thought we were covering. The twenty things we talked about last week, but uh. Yeah, it wasn't. I mean, since we got it, and there too, I guess I can pepper. Meeting last night.
True.
Because it's just information.
Yeah.
Uh, to you. Yeah, Wishram last night with Jeff Hunter, Rob McLeve there. Uh, discussions was on from anywhere from the speed limit on Highway fourteen now with the new development on the north side. But that's more critical now than ever. Uh, so Jeff said he would be working with Department. Transportation on that, his DOT.
And what, I'm, I I know, I I don't know any details about that development. Nor the.
It it's where the Native American.
They were gonna build in Dallasport, I don't know if you remember hearing some of that.
Yeah.
For a long time, and then when that uh sunsetted, they found a an alternative site in Wishram and it, as you're going through Wishram, it's on the left up on the hill.
Yeah.
You can see all the new houses up there.
Or over there, that's which way you go.
Yeah, I come from my side.
Uh, and that was.
And that that's that's the sunset program, that was Dallasport, that's where it moved to.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're all.
And that uh division, subdivision was already had water, sewer and electric to all the homesteads. And they sold their dispatch.
I see a lot of them are getting home solar now and they have their roofs.
Yes, so they have solar.
New programs.
So anyhow, that's that's the new uh housing, which is adding. More students to Wishram School District, which they talked a little bit about that. And uh, but not in detail, but they're gonna have to get more. Classes, verbal classes, that probably uh.
And they did drop the speed limit through Lyle. Which all do.
Yeah, they brought that up.
And Dallas.
You go through Murdoch.
Yeah.
You go through Lyle, you go through Benjen. Uh, so anyway, it it it'll be a good discussion down the road. Discussion whether the county could help with the fire hall if they needed some paving on Main Street. You know, said we could do it in our local or whatever. With another public entity uh that just costs uh. They talked about signs. On various things, I mean, there's the Lewis. Clark's thought that they said it's not signed, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, some sites already have there that we. Yeah. We just talked about roads in general, snow plowing, uh water runoff, just. It 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 was good discussion. That talked about code compliance. Appreciate Rob being there going through the process. On that, and my discussion was what our six goals. What we're trying to do in uh coconut plants, well, uh, to have that discussion. And hope they'd have a representative, you know, listening and involved with that process. Uh, they talked about the cleanup with the school, whether we had any resources to help when they do a community cleanup.
Good.
Yeah. And, you know, like Rob said, depends what, how with the year it is. What resources we have are limited. I mean, that that was kind of the just, there was twenty three people. Lasted about hour now. It's just great to see a community council.
Yeah, yeah, everyone.
Very respectful people.
So, do you know of the code compliance, have you spoken with George, is are there a lot of open?
There were some issues down there and that, he's dead lucky, yes. Uh, didn't go in detail, it was more contact. George or Rob directly and talk about them than talking about it in the open meeting.
Right.
That uh. So, said feel free to follow up. And Rob went through, you know, we have forms on line, takes two people in the environmental area, blah blah blah, you know. Handle some processes.
Yeah.
That what George does on that, you may not think anything's happening because it might do. Call the jurors. Look for A B C D. Feel free to touch your face. No, no, it really did. Jeff and Rob really did. That's all I have with that.
What's Wishram's population?
Split, I'm not sure. Between two, no, that's.
You know, there was community needs assessment, which is gonna be done again with both uh. Hospitals and the county. Of help. And that had the number of people as well as it was broken down, so, yeah.
In two thousand twenty two, the um population in Wishram was it was five hundred and two.
Okay.
So that was two thousand twenty two.
Okay.
So since.
That's that's lower than upward, so.
Yeah, so when you say twenty three people, that many showed up. Oh, that's good. So.
I guess type hundred.
Oh, you still got another ten minutes, how how did Dallas burn out?
Oh, I can talk, I'll do Lyle first, because I went to Lyle, um, remember what that was, that was.
I know, all the nights were on the other, I saw.
They do, um. It it was a really good meeting, I didn't count, but I think probably fifteen people, um, and I visited with them before. And uh what was interesting, we were so busy at the county with everything going on the last six months, I haven't been background in community councils at all. Um, they stayed the course on their projects and they've stayed really faithful to moving forward and the big accomplishments. So I had to give them credit for that, I was happy to see that they stuck together and kept working. Um, some of the issues they talked about that they're having is um. The trailhead for the Clickat Trail. Uh, ever since they put it in, it's always been. A little bit of a controversy for the community because it gathers some nighttime people that aren't so great. And we have neighbors right across the street that have problems with it. Um, ARPS doesn't have the staff to come in and close at sunset or open at sunrise. So they're gonna allow the community to come up with three people that'll do a rotating plan and they'll be able to close the park parking lot at night. So that made the community happy.
They have a barrier?
They do, there's a gate there that they can close.
And there's one on one side, they didn't know.
Yeah, they do have barriers there and they have the bathrooms that are open just certain seasons, but I don't know how soon they lock those bathrooms up. Um, and then the National Park Service has came through with some money for a Delta. Program that they've had going, um, all of the sediment sand coming out of the Clickat River from when they closed. The irrigation, all of that watershed going down the Big Muddy, and it just brought everything down, now it's gathering up out of the mouth of the Clickat. So that's a concern for the Native Americans for fish passage. And for the fisheries people, so they've been working on it for some time, figuring out how to dredge that and what they can do with it. Uh, and also for the transportation on Columbia, that's becoming a problem, but in the meantime. All the locals and winterers have decided that's a great kite border beach and so that economy is kind of building around that. So the community is struggling with, how do we balance that and how do we work with them, maybe dredge those soils, but. Put them in an alternative place to extend that beach so we can still use it, um. They understand that the people who have the river, the um. Fisheries and the commerce people on the Columbia get to say what happens there. Um, so they're they're working with them and they have a good relationship going to maybe balance some of it. Uh, they're making progress with being able to cross the railroad, we feel like they're getting some. Finally some help or positive out of BN hopefully to where they'll be able to figure out how to cross under the railroad, over the railroad, something so they can still. Access that beach.
Right.
So they're making progress there, um. Other than that, they just have their, oh, they're they've got a mural program going. And they're doing well, they have an artist invested that has done murals that's helping them and the whole grocery store side of the grocery store along Highway fourteen, we hope to get a mural there. So Vines doing well, all good.
I forgot to mention that there was a good discussion on the park.
Yeah.
Wishram and the park plan.
Yeah, and Jeff's been, Public Works has been really good about helping with that part last year. I think they got them a flag and for their flag pole, set up the system so they can have a flag and wish out.
That's the park with the historic train.
Train. Yeah, I forgot to mention that because there was some discussion of someday down the road. You know, get they get restrooms and then it was, well. Need to do an overall comprehensive park plan someday with the county in order to get funding.
But Jeff's been good, and that's that program we've talked about before where they used to just have forty thousand each, I believe, out of Republic Services money for Banco back then. That we would dedicate to each community, then we took that away and now they kind of all just come at random and stuff asking for.
Yeah, I. Someday I'd love to see us try to refund the funding of the EDA for communities.
Yeah.
So it could be used as a match, to leverage bigger money to get things done, it's it's just coming up. But that was another authority I thought. Uh, to. Work on who gets what.
Yeah.
Any amounts.
When we first started with, it was a great program because they knew what they were gonna get and they came in, they were able to fund their fire departments. It really was a good program.
Yeah, it was used, uh, the county or. All of there. But I mean, that's, it's the overall discussion budget. Well, thank you.
There, early we can say Dallasport.
And I could bring it, oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, you bring up Dallasport, but we can do it after, it's great.
Would you like? To go now?
A dollar, you're you're in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We won't let you here over the US.
I'm ready.
Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Um, in the consent agenda today, I'm just gonna keep going, are we good?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't need to recognize you.
No, but the, in the consent agenda, um, today, uh, we have a line of credit that we are, we would like to use for. Um, the senior services uh to purchase some uh vehicles that they have. Currently, the way the the dollars were budgeted, um, this is strictly a cash flow situation where the fund has no cash. Um, so the the uh invoice is gonna cause the fund to go negative cash balance. Um, and so, uh, I've talked to Sharon, uh, we, it would've been nice to do this maybe earlier in the year, but um. But currently, we have uh. A loan set up to loan, uh, one twenty five, we'll loan the five oh five fund two hundred, up to two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. At the uh. Rate that we've used on other loans, which is a calculation of the LGIP, which the LGIP is dropping. So it it's probably, I'm guessing, gonna be at four and a half percent or thereabouts. Um, and that's truly a guess, I I don't know, I know that our last one, we were in the fours, um.
So you picked a number?
Yeah, we'll go through and do the calculation, um, and then uh that will help them, they had the budget, um, they just didn't have the cash flow in the in the um, in the fund. Um, and so. I I if there's questions, I'd like to answer questions or.
You answered one of the question, is this usually a normal? With reimbursable.
Yeah, I think it's a risk of reimbursable grants because I think the kicker is is the with, a lot of the grants nowadays are reimbursable, but we have to pay the vendor before sometimes we can get the money back from the state. So we have to have operating capital, um.
Okay, that was my first question, second question was, okay. It's a loan. Can senior services absorb the interest payment within their existing budget?
Um, Sharon and I talked about that this morning, if not, she would have to put a uh, uh, do a supplemental in twenty twenty five. Probably, but um, that would, I mean, we have the ability to do that without the fund ending in a negative cash balance.
Okay. That that's all, do go ahead.
So, um. Is it an absolute requirement that we do the interest to take it out of one twenty five?
Well, I mean, no one fund can benefit from another fund, so I mean, I, it seems very unfair and I think.
That's a good question.
I think it's a fair question and I think that's where everybody's at is the interest part, but, you know, I mean, funds that are managing their funds. Managing their cash flow and have funds to loan to other funds should be able to benefit, I mean, that is kind of part of how the process works. Um, so you know, I think in some regards, I think Sharon and I talked this morning, I think we need to look at, and I'm gonna talk to Jen about this, I I don't know why we have Fund five oh five. Um, because. It's really, we're not using it, Fund five, the five hundred funds are internal service funds. Um, when I got here, we had several, um, we had one for computers, we have this one for senior services. Uh, BRNR is an internal service fund, but that one gets rolled up. Um, the only one that we're really using currently is uh ERNR, which is equipment rentals. Because we're actually calculating a rate and figuring out what it is and we're renting the equipment to the other funds. And these other ones, we're just kind of using them as a like a savings account kind of thing.
A replacement.
Yeah, it, there's really nothing in there, once we buy the vehicles, we're actually licensing them with funds from one oh four, so it's not, we we have all these pieces. So the easiest. So the easiest way in this situation to resolve the problem for twenty twenty-four, and that's kind of part of it is is where we're at. We did look at borrowing money from one oh four. But one oh, which is senior services, but because they have seven hundred thousand dollars in their normal fund, but we don't have the budget in there to go through and do that to be able to borrow. So one of the reasons for using one twenty-five is because one twenty-five has the budget in twenty twenty-four. Um, to be able to go.
I snuck in on you. Didn't realize you were jumping up there.
Oh, yeah, we're moving right along.
I see that. Greg and I have communicated before we put this forward and we did verify that the budget is available in one twenty-five. Um, and that's allowing us to do this. If the budget wasn't available, then we would have to wait till twenty twenty-five's budget and do a supplemental budget.
Okay, my questions were answered. So. Anything, Todd?
No, I mean, yes, it's just it didn't seem like there's any any risk in like this transfer.
My only last question was if if you do the interest payment and that comes out, then where does that come out of Sharon's budget? And what we have to do is supplemental to replace that.
Yeah.
Or just. Perhaps it depends on what her budget looks like for twenty twenty-five.
Because the interest isn't gonna get paid for till twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So I think we have time to figure that out in twenty twenty-five. I mean, to be able to make that work. I I I mean, I don't know that they're gonna need the money for very long. I mean, I I I put in there June, I'm assuming it's gonna be paid back well before that. I think Sharon and I have talked a little bit that I think in the past they've been so short that maybe they've been able to get the money and get them turned around. I think with the state though, there's the risk now, how the state's gonna function and what they're, you know, we may have more situations where we're having to front load some things or not. And again, this is the risk when you start running on grants and there are a lot of grants are reimbursable. They don't just give you the money upfront and you spend it. A lot of them are, you turn in your expenses for those. We have to have the money in those funds to be able to cover.
So just because you're budgeted, it's not.
That's exactly, that's exactly the kicker. And that's the thing in this is that there is a difference between budget and cash and this money was budgeted. Everything was done correct. There's, it wasn't that it wasn't spent inappropriately to the budget and the budget was balanced. It's that the funds, the cash that was in there is not enough to make the purchase. And again, it's its own Fund Five Oh Five, so the fund balance is gonna roll over and then the money's gonna come back in there. So it's really a cash flow issue as any.
But but speaks to why our offices have to communicate too.
Yeah.
And as well as the auditors at work tend together. So.
And I should have identified. I I knew I didn't have in Fund Five Oh Five, the full cash to pay the invoice. And misunderstood that I could use my cash in one oh four to pay that. You know, it's my ignorance for that. I should have I should have had a discussion earlier about that. So we worked down to the wire and.
This this is a simple solution to the problem.
Exactly. It gets us straight into the year.
Situations and they're simple situations. In my opinion, it's a simple solution to the problem. And we just learn from it and move forward.
And I do think it's a learning. I think that is. And I think it's one thing for every, it's one thing as we go through the budget in twenty twenty-five and we sit and start doing that process next year, you know, as we start going. Is that that is the one thing with with these types of situations is we have to keep track of our cash flow as we're spending it because you may have the budget in twenty twenty-five, but you may not get the money until June in the year and you have to be able to.
I know the utility went to an extra step. So in budgeting, you had to put down your revenues and your expenses by time period. And that got to be a real pain on several projects. But at least showed you the cash flow uh, in the timeframe, but it as a harbor head was a real pain.
Right.
Because it never seemed like anything ever.
It and that's well, that's the budget. That's the money to man. It's not gonna go as planned right there.
Yeah.
Do you think you'll be able to absorb that interest? Into into your budget or?
Uh, it, well, depending on what the interest amount is going to be, I mean, there would potentially be a five oh five. It's an issue of the five oh five and then one oh four again. And so certainly I have a balance in one oh four. There typically, five oh five has been budgeted for and used exactly kind of everything unless we have surplus auction revenue or donation that comes in. And and so I think in terms of meeting that um, Brett earlier, it's kind of talking about even the purpose of those. It doesn't really make sense because of things that are challenging. On a cash basis, whether or not I have to have more of those.
Cash basis versus budget basis.
It's just being used as a managerial fund at this point.
Yeah, I really think frankly, we need to have the discussion to make it. That's just one more uh, hoop to have to jump through from an accounting perspective to keep things right when we're not really doing anything with it. But but again, that's not my decision. It's a decision that I think we have in the process.
I'm sure we'll have that discussion farther down the line when we start.
Yeah, and I think we have time kind of along absorbing it. We also have time to do a supplemental if we have to or to do something or figure that out, but yeah.
But we're gonna work together.
The one thing about the way the the term sheets laid out is this is how we've done all of the other ones. It's consistent with past practice of the county so that if we have another fund that's in um,
Yeah.
in there.
No, I just appreciate everybody working together to come up with this.
I think this is good. I think this cleans up twenty twenty-four and we're good.
Any additional questions, comments?
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming in early.
You bet. Nope, that works good. Thank you.
Our goal for these Tuesday morning workshops is trying to keep on time and not a little heavy.
You're doing good. Eleven fifty-two.
Well, thank you. And thank you, Sharon. Do you have any more discussion?
Uh, we've talked about Dallas.
Dallas. Big for a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it was well attended. Can you count the room? I'd say sixty.
Sixty to seventy, yeah.
Yeah, it was very interesting. Um, got rather heated at times, passionate uh, about their community. Um, it was a developer that brought forward a project that he's working on for the area. I think there were three hundred and fifty estimated houses that might be.
Three hundred and fifty units or not in units, I guess. Yeah, because some of townhomes, but three hundred and fifty living units.
So uh, average population per unit. And the impact that could change with the Dallas part over night, or I mean, not over night, I'm sure space.
And I think, um, I think for me, it was an interest meeting because it did open up conversations finally because you always hear the backdoor things and this person's gonna do that with their property or this person's planning this with their property. And then you get the emotional side of the neighbors of what maybe they don't want, just like solar. Um, so this is very, very, very pre-planning. Um, I think a lot of people were upset because they thought it's gonna come, it's gonna be shoved down their throat and they haven't had any impact or any input into what was gonna happen to their community.
Yeah, to the impact.
And they had a lot of tough questions about what about the schools? What about the water? How's this gonna impact everybody else? But I think waiting till it goes through the processes is gonna be important. Um, I'm not quite sure if the developer was happy that he'd came and opened this can of worms already or not.
He seemed to deal with it really well and he's he's done a lot of development in the, so he was the architect. So land hasn't been purchased. This is not a for sure thing. Early, early planning concept. I think the concept was for three phases totaling three hundred and fifty. Phase one would be multiple apartment units of eight. I think eight apartments per unit. And then the whole complex is gonna be kind of a circle around a green space that would have townhomes. Not necessarily tiny homes, but small dwelling, uh, single family homes with the possibility to have an ADU. Condominiums was mentioned when I I spoke with them, but I don't know about that.
Whatever I read too, somewhat of a park.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, green zone.
Greenspan.
In the center and then uh, so so seventy acres of the like three hundred and fifty acres just in that north northeast corner. So only seventy for this and that includes the green space, all the homes, parking and the the wetland area. Just describe it kind of as a dry, arid wetland area. Unique to the Dallas, Dallas port. So, um, the comments over, I thought, I mean, there was basically six people upset out of sixty or seventy. And and their comments were accurate, you know, because they're like, well, this isn't affordable and you that level of affordability of what was ten, twenty years ago is like being being in construction is it's lumber cost X, but this would be about the most affordable project in the gorge and you know, uh, allowing for inflation and stuff, but I mean, there's nothing going on like this. That would be, this would be there, they don't wanna make cheap units. They didn't, you know, but they they wanna make nice things that will last. But besides that, their whole thing is is thinking about affordability in square foot.
The the good thing about starting the discussion, I know it's got a long ways to go.
Yes.
Is people could understand, try to formulate, what are the impacts?
Yes.
And can you deal with the impacts?
And that was.
I mean, whether it's water.
That was their fear that they weren't going to have that chance to talk about it.
Yeah.
But I, the only, the only speaking I did was at the very end to let them know we hadn't seen anything at the county. So we have a huge public process and human procurement process to go through. Um, it, I was, there were a couple of comments made that were false about the process that kind of um, upset me because what it does is it comes back to cause uh, problems for the county that um, we do have a full-blown SEPA process. We do have these processes and that does involve all the agencies and that does involve the accommodation. Because these applications are routed through them just like the agencies. So um, yes, everyone will be weighing in, including the public once this gets to our table. And that's the important, you know, is everybody will have. Yeah, but uh, there's other communities like Trout Lake has kind of a a vision plan for something up there too. And I've heard good and bad. So Dallas Port isn't the only one.
And you're part of that in March.
Yeah.
Probably have that.
Yeah, and I've I've been on some Zoom meetings and 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 chatting with uh, with good people on the Trout Lake Community Council. And I mean, I think, and and that's what I want everyone to know is that talking and planning for it, you know, and of course it'll go through the, you know, so people were commenting on the water. If there's not water, it won't happen. They they, at this stage, they really believe it is the one. From talking to the Water District, they believe it is also. Let's bring bring money into that area. The, you know, I mean, so there's a lot of positive. There there's things to still work out. And uh, this won't this will put downward pressure, I think, on home prices and on rentals. But it's not gonna meet that really low income need. But if you if you have three hundred and fifty new, you know, you know, I mean, I know people looking for rentals and and the prices that they were mentioning, they didn't really want to, but were lower than anything I've heard in a long time, so.
I know there's a demand.
Things are gonna change.
Yeah.
And that's our only urban growth.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Yes, in the gorge.
Yeah, but I think with the help of the county, it'll be a positive process.
Yeah.
I think we have a need to.
Like I said, we just need to make sure people are aware when it gets to the county level, the process where they have the right to be involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or be involved. Try to just be involved.
If it if it can't happen there, I don't know where where it could happen. Uh, that's what, that's a place where people are supposed to live.
Well, I I keep all of that as work.
Yeah.
I I I mean, my goals get more up to community needs. I I I'm gonna try. You know, when I go to like within your district, like Bush ran, I I want you to know what I'm doing.
I'm not.
I I'm not trying to go into your district.
Not learning about.
And that's all I ask is if we do that, go to each other. Just make aware of that. So it's not, I'm not trying to.
Yeah. But in the end, we all represent everybody.
We represent.
And we have to vote on things. So you have to be educated.
Yeah, well, it's twelve o'clock and I will recess this workshop and we will uh, start meeting at four o'clock. Good afternoon. I'll call the board meeting, uh, county commissioners to order of Tuesday, January fourteenth, uh, roll call. All board members are present. Todd, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I will.
Let's be placed to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the business agenda. There motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the business agendas presented.
Okay.
I say.
There's been a vote in second. Any discussion? Here are no discussion. We'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Uh, approval of the commissioner meeting minutes for December thirty-first as presented. And you'll probably have to walk us through this and it looked fine to me, but uh,
I say, I you.
As presented.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are able to to vote on it.
To vote on it, right. I just leaning on Lori that it looked as good as presented.
Correct. So I would make a motion to approve the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes as presented.
Yes, I move.
A second.
In second. Any discussion? Here are none. We'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Next item. Actually, before we start citizen comment, I need to make an apology. Uh, in our workshop, I closed the workshop without a motion. We're closing the workshop, so we closed the workshop after we closed Zoom. Uh, that's my bad and I apologize. And if you need me to move aside.
Not getting out.
No, anyhow.
Nice, right.
So open for citizen comment, uh, ask people, please, uh, limit the time to three minutes. Please state your name and the location. Anybody in the room? Would you like to speak? Okay. Anybody online? Rick?
Yeah, afternoon.
Thank you.
Now, first off, you know, I I was reading the agenda and are you guys really thinking of extending James Dean Construction for additional two years? I mean, you know, how much uh, more time are you gonna let this company, you know, mess with the taxpayers? Um, you know, I had to, I had to clean this up a little bit because I got people sitting with me at work today, so it's gonna be a little spotty. Uh, now commissioners, I Reagan Andrews do not make the same mistakes that were previously made by Lori and Jake. He is gone. She is still here. We know that she is a lost cause, but you two can help save this county. Now, the public record shows that James Dean Construction only pays two hundred and three dollars a year in property taxes. Now, I know I'm about to pay more than two thousand for a house. So I think, um, you know, that's not quite right. And the company is making millions of dollars off the county and paying what a hundred dollars a year? And only forced to pay that because they got caught and didn't even pay for the whole amount? No, had no uh, penalties, nothing? That sounds like kind of like fraud. And um, you know, how about letting Sheriff Songer open an investigation and all of that and see what happens? You know, that that'd be something good to vote on. Uh, in fact, if Sheriff Songer, if you're listening, is this something you could directly investigate? James D Construction must be held accountable and those who assist held accountable as well as those like sounds kind of like criminal acts to me, but you know, I'm just a novice. Now. Now, y'all are leaving millions of dollars on the table there that's scrambling to get money other ways. Here's an idea, um, you know, you can ban short term rentals in Clickat County, some will disagree, but when home prices drop, we can keep our locals, we could bring in more jobs and we can create revenue. Plus, people will probably be happier, or you could just give up and say, you know, you want to be Portland and we can just go from there. Now, I really don't have any questions this week, just general disgust, um Commissioners Andy, Andrews and I rig, this is not at you, since you are new on the Commission. And I really hope that you have our backs and get with this, we'll all get this all done, alright guys, I appreciate it, have a good one.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments. Uh, is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak at this time?
Good afternoon Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to start by offering congratulations to Commissioners Irig and Andrews, uh as they start, my hope is that your presence on the board. Can help us move Clickitat County forward in a positive way, and of course, thanks to all three of you for your willingness to serve the citizens of the county. I'm here today to briefly introduce my role with Yakima Clickitat Farm Association, or Y K F A. In prior times, we were known as the Yakima Farm Bureau. This past year, we took measures to ensure that we could continue to be a strong voice for agriculture in central Washington, and particularly Yakima and Clickitat Counties. Y K F A has already hired lobbyist John Stu Miller, former executive director of Washington Farm Bureau, to work in Olympia. And he's got our eyes on several bills already, I encourage you to read through my supplemental comments that I'll hand to the clerk. That address a few bills that are already filed and will affect agriculture here and around the state. I also ask that you keep us in mind as a partner as you deal with local county issues that may affect agriculture or farming. Again, I want to thank you all for your willingness to serve our citizens. I look forward to working with you in the future and I will be sure I bring a membership form for the Yakima Clickitat Farm Association next time I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Barrett. Online. Anne.
Oh, good morning, I just, this is Anne Slade from Dalsport. I just wanted to say a quick public thank you for the new Dalsport Community Centers building sign, it looks very nice, we've gotten several compliments on that. And we appreciate it, it was, it was overdue and we're happy to have it. Uh, and also for the upcoming work on the ceiling repair and the air conditioner. Leak repair that was up in the ceiling where they have to put in the new insulation and whatever, we certainly appreciate those things too. And just a quick question, I'm assuming that. Public meeting or public comments is going to be moved back to one o'clock instead of nine o'clock for all future meetings, if you could just verify that when you're doing your response. Uh, maybe I, I, maybe I missed it when that was discussed, I, I didn't get to watch the whole meeting last week, so. If that's the case, then I will change the reminder on my calendar, so, thank you very much.
No, I'll be happy to comment right away to Anne, yes, the public comment will be. It may be one oh five or one oh four, uh but it's planning to be that way from here out. So, thank you for asking. Okay. In the room, anyone else like to speak? Okay, online. Amanda.
Hold on.
Oh, there she is.
Hello Commissioners, happy new year, and I am just so delighted to see a friendly board up there, um. So, I am calling in, I have a couple ideas, but first I wanted to, um. I had a very long campaign, ten months, and I met, I've made over a thousand new friends, some in regional nonprofits and local nonprofits. And that work in the county are just citizens and I want to offer. My new rolodex and connections to any of you, if you're like, oh, who do I reach at this board or who's focusing on this, I have a really good pulse on a lot of that and. Still more to learn, but I have a lot of information I would like to get out of my brain and to you all, so feel free to reach out, um. So this leads me to my first idea, one of the things I did was I went to. Uh gatherings of and uh met directly with regional nonprofits and then groups like. The Food Security Coalition, MaKed, Mid Columbia Houseless Collaborative, the Clickitat County Childcare Coalition. And time and time again, I heard, oh my gosh, we haven't had somebody from the county here, I wasn't even elected at that point, but. There is a lack of representation from our county and also since. Learning about how our government works, I understand that our departments are. Under-sourced and people are spread really thin, so I wanted to think about some ways that we could. Get people going to these meetings and being a conduit for resources that I know exist, that our county isn't utilizing around. Um workforce housing and uh economic development and projects like that, um. So, would love to brainstorm and then um I also would really love to put a little. Plant a seed about you guys moving forward with hiring. A grant writer or a grant writing department, and I know that there's funds available from the Economic Development Funds. And I think this would be an incredible resource to bring to all of our departments, uh not only workload but resources and I am confident. That money will be paid back after their first year, I'm sure. So, thank you for your service, I'm here for you, take care, everyone.
Thank you for your comments, Amanda. Anyone else from the room? Okay, anyone else online?
I have uh two six six two Tracy McHugh.
Okay. Tracy?
Yes, hello Commissioners and welcome, uh Mister Andrews and Mister Irig to the board. Um, I would like to publicly thank Commissioner Zoller for attending the Lyle Community Council meeting Wednesday, January eighth. Um, I believe Lori's attendance at this meeting shows she is, she is committed to listening to the public. Uh, and the people that live here in the community of Lyle, and thank you Lori for her attending that. Um, today I'd asked the Board of Commissioners to consider a couple items. The first, to consider having town hall style meetings every quarter, that would be a minimum of. One meeting every three months or four me, and four meetings a year. Um, I believe that it will take these kind of meetings to really be heard and, and um. By the people and uh so that the people can be heard by the Commissioners. Second, um, I would um suggest the Commissioners attend a Cisipa meeting, a Clickitat County Interagency Fire Association meeting. Held the fourth Wednesday of every month. And I believe they start at seven and they rotate from different fire districts, um fire stations, so you'd have to ask. Possibly Jeff King or um uh Bob Songer, they get the Cisipa emails. Um, the Clickitat County Interagency Fire Association is a pretty big organization. Um, according to, to Commissioner Anderson last, uh on the last board. It's a, a roundtable style meeting with state, federal and local agencies. Uh, both from the state of Washington and the state of Oregon, and they decide things like what should be brought to the legislature. And different projects for the area that would be good for, for um both the, the counties of Hood River, Clickitat. Gilliam, the Dawls and Skamania. So I would suggest um all the board members to try to attend a meeting uh with Cisipa. And then um. I, I'd like the uh the Commissioners to look into um possibly getting the Public Works. Right of way agreements in a database online to be accessed by the public. Um, I know with myself recently, I've um for my own property here in Lyle, I've had to um. I'm, I'm now having to depend on what the right of way for the um Centerville Highway had, what the Public Works has for that. And it's a burden for them to have to look through all the different right of ways that have happened since nineteen fifty four. And I would love to do some of that work for them, but unfortunately, those. Those agreements or right of ways um are not available to the public, so. Um, in the future, that would be very nice and I hope the board will work on that, and otherwise, have a great day and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Tracy. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? Gabrielle.
Gabrielle.
Excuse me.
Congratulations to the new board and congratulations Clickattack County poachers and their feet for becoming state and federal criminals. Who slaughtered three federally and state protected gray wolves. And wink, wink, our county is on. Top of the list as, and on the suspect list for a female gray wolf that went missing and was paired with the big muddy pack gray wolf. That was slaughtered in Trout Lake, the award for piss poor poacher goes to. Goldendale for the criminal that can't even make a clean shot and leaves a state and federally protected wolf wounded to suffer before death. And the award for condoning this lawlessness for poaching goes to the sheriff. Who wink, wink, goes through, speaks publicly to condone this behavior and speaks publicly about wolves uh in the county allegedly. Clickattack County becomes the poster child for lawlessness. And I would love to hear how the county is going to sell economic development and in, and um. Bringing in uh uh contracts and business opportunities when we have that kind of a label. The ten year economic development plan is due for a rewrite. The work uh needs to, in the new plan, needs to begin and, and it needs to include childcare as an economic infrastructure. I appreciate the legislative update from Zach this morning and that the rural priority list needs to include childcare. As an infant, uh as an economic infrastructure and that rural communities are not seen by Olympia and the legislature. Um, I also want to finally say that I bristle when I hear any attempt to limit the public's access. To government process and. And if that access is impeded, I, I hope that you will um reconsider. And while I understand that meetings are a working order for the Commissioner, we the people are your financial backers. And I feel that we should be included, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the room? Roger?
Yeah, thank you very much, I will second a bit from Gabrielle on that one. In that, yeah, I would ask you to explain a little bit more why you're having a public meeting that you're not making accessible to the whole public this Thursday. Get together. It seems to me that in discussing why you wanted to do that, I almost heard saying, well, people feel more comfortable talking about that. And there shouldn't be anything that anybody feels uncomfortable talking back in front of the public, if so, then we need to know about that too, so. Just a question of why this seems to have, this magu chains came about and uh. Their chance to reconsider, also want to follow up on the suggestion, town halls is a wonderful idea. And I think it really helped keeping the, the gap between people's access and what you need to do and get things done, thank you very much, appreciate it. And congratulations to both the winners and uh good luck for a new year.
No, thank you. Probably, I'd like. To make a quick comment on that one, I very much supported us. For. Going to workshops on Thursday, I very much supported for us not to zoom the workshops, they are public meetings, the public. Is invited, we had a workshop last Thursday, I think we had five, six people in attendance. And we had good communication with the people that was in the audience. Uh, those are open meetings, those are public meetings, I think as a business, we have some business we need to conduct and uh. I, I'm pushed. To move forward on that and that direction, see how it works. I'll stand, I said it when I was running. For the campaign, I said what my intent was and what I was planning to do. So, uh anyhow, but thanks for asking, right? Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody else online? I'll ask one more time, oh, okay, Anthony.
Good afternoon, not used to saying that.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Anthony Rizzi from Dalsport, I would like to thank the two Commissioners that were able to make it to our. Uh, Community Council meeting. Um. As you saw, there was a lot of people there, um. And that was one of the reasons why I wanted to have that meeting is because when I found out about the project. I immediately thought that we need to get that out in front of the people, because you know, you, a lot of people complain, they don't. Hear about anything till, you know, a year or two years into a project, it's like, no, no, no. But. I don't like the fact that all the gossip and everything that's going on about it with the fact that they're saying, oh, this is the golf course thing again, it's like, no, it's not a golf course, it has a very nice building. Set up and around what's going to be a park, a thirty acre park. And uh wetlands area and, and you know, these, they're doing their due diligence, we need to do our due diligence to make sure they do it correctly. Now, I'm not saying I'm for or against or anything else, because again, I'm. Part of a community council and I'm not going to do that, I'm just saying that I would. Hope everybody would give them a chance to get their feet rolling, they're doing their due diligence, they've been to the water board meetings, I know they've been up. Talked to Scott and Jeff and other people, so I mean, things are happening and they're looking at different things, but. Seems to me, just from an outsider, I, it seems like they're doing what they need to do to do this project. So I just wanted to let everybody know, I appreciate everybody coming and uh there was some pretty good questions and then. There was several people there to attack, so. As you guys know all about it, because you're gonna, you're gonna experience that a lot there, Ron, and uh anyway. Uh, I think the meeting went very well and I was very excited to see you guys represent and come and take a look at it, again, it's a brand new project. You know, it's only been on the books for about four months, three, four, yeah, about four months. So. I think we're doing pretty good to get on the ground floor of this, so thank you very much and I wish you guys all the luck.
And thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anybody else in the meeting room? Or online? I'll ask one more time. In the meeting room or online? Okay, we'll close uh public comment. Move back to the business, uh. Does any of the Commissioners have any comment they do want to make, I, I made my comment, I was really wet. But I don't want to cut you out, you didn't want to say anything.
I, I, I guess I'll comment on the, because both Gabe. And Roger, and I don't remember if anyone else, maybe just mentioned one other time, about the public comment, um, not about public comment, but about.
Zooming.
Zooming, uh and. This, and, and, and my vote was to kind of postpone it a little bit. But I felt very much what we had discussed is. To have open workshops that were in a public meeting, to hold them downstairs, that would be a, a better meeting room. One, currently, we don't have Zoom down there. But I, I think. So that's not misconstrued as lack of openness. Because everything we do here on Tuesdays is zoomed that we vote on. We wanted to meet with. Both the public and department heads and other electeds. And. And brainstorming workshop ideas, and so some of those ideas we get from, from meeting with, with the residents, some of them we get from meeting with, with everyone from department heads. Uh, of course, every area of our lives is not zoomed, so we have lots of conversations, so those were. So that department heads and employees could come, not be nervous, as we're brainstorming and talking some of those ideas. It's, it's kinda, sometimes that comes back on elected officials and department heads. when you're just trying to be creative and and think of a good way to save the county money. And it's brought up that you can save money by doing X, Y, or Z or you know, and then it that kind of spreads out there and people are going, oh, they're talking about cutting the job or they're talking about adding a program. And we just want it to be very open that we can discuss all those things. And then Tuesday mornings, reason why we decided to open up with workshops instead of open up with public comment voting. So they could sit there and listen to us hash out these ideas that we've gathered on Thursdays. And then have public comment so that public comment would be more informed and further educate us on on people's beliefs and then vote on them. So I think that whole process of Thursdays, we gather information, we reach out Tuesday morning. We bring it to the public that we're not able to attend. And then we vote on it. I think it's a it's a great process. And we it is very much one of our number one things is having town hall meetings, more workshops and and bringing things go into more community meetings. So I think you'll see more openness, not less. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd? Okay.
Sure. Let's get to moving to you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move to payroll warrant certifications. So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and seven cents uh for the date ending January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Motion. I second the motion.
Made motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Here and none will vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the account to approve the account payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of nine hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents for the date ending January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, been moved. Is there a second?
A second. Motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and none will vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, present. Motion carries. I'm present, yeah. Uh, item number eleven, Public Works Pay Estimate.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the pay estimate two and the final for the Click Jack County Superior Court floor covering in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay, second the motion.
And moved and seconded? Yeah, we discussed this earlier in the day also, which I do like the process of meeting and go through our consent agenda way ahead. And then the public has a right to comment too.
Sure.
So yes.
Um, I do want to note on your blue card, the consent agenda, it's not listed on there.
Uh, yeah, I
I just don't want you to forget it.
Okay.
Yeah, I had that as item ten here, but it's not item ten here, so.
No, sorry. It must have got cut out.
Well, we'll do that after this motion. So we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. I support that.
So you need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
For the twenty items on the consent agenda. Yes.
A motion to approve the twenty items on the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
How can I open that to?
Uh, the motion could die lack of second. Is one method?
Or if you second.
Or you second it and we could have a discussion and then there can be amendment to that uh motion.
Okay, a second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Open for discussion. I believe the one item that was discussed may be a concern is item number seventeen.
Correct.
Under Public Works.
I I I just I I I was not able to see the uh the the contractor exactly what that amendment is. And and like what what you just sent me, I don't think is the complete.
Okay, and I
The whole, yeah.
Okay, and I think we discussed that last week with Public Works um there or this morning. Uh, here in Corvus, yeah, they're going to change um the parcel in a parcel trade because it's been a parcel that's been encircled by the applicant's property for many, many years. We didn't even know it was our parcel. So they're going to initiate a they're in the midst of a parcel trade so that that all belongs to them. We have an alternate parcel that we trade for. Um, and this placeholder amends that for two years so we can get that that agreement done if they have worked that.
Right.
Has to go through legal. But you just need to see the back.
And well, and that that was because that 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 obviously happened by accident or 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 something in the past. And that's
In a lot of years.
That's a that's a great deal for the county to have a useless piece of property traded for useful piece of property. It it was just I I I've never looked at the the lease agreement in its entirety.
Yeah, it's it's in there, yeah.
You're gonna find you inherited a lot of takes.
And I apologize if I'm holding anything up.
Oh, no, no, I mean, we have two ways. We can hold on. We could do a friendly amendment to remove item seventeen. And if you accept that, we could go ahead and move on everything except seventeen and keep having the discussion. Or we could just let you go through it. It's whatever the
Depends on how much time it is.
Of the board. Yeah, it's um.
What's the? Are are you familiar in all glory with that lease agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
What? What is that? What is the amount on that?
Was it one moment? I'm I'm gonna contact Jen for the Sure.
Yeah, I probably want to hear Jeff talk about it this morning, but uh My my question was more around why a two year than a five year. I I've seen that was a question. He answered why on that.
Yes.
Uh, I understood that.
And I I believe we've talked about that lease agreement payment before. And it seemed low, but it was similar to every other lease agreement we had with other partners. That was the same amount that's on other leasing.
Well, and I heard Jeff this morning clearly state he wasn't aware that we had that in place.
For years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Early.
It was done way before Jeff too.
Et cetera.
I think the rationale behind the low payment amount is that it's benefiting the whole community, letting them cross that and take that rock other places rather than and we have we have similar agreements with other entities that uh if amounts start going up, then we would have to raise our amounts we're paying in similar agreements with other parties too. The market rate would change in most lease agreements.
And and so if I make a uh amendment to remove this and and we can bring it up at the end later on today?
We could still for discuss.
We can still.
Yeah, our
He's on his way down.
Okay.
Oh.
So.
There could be a friendly amendment if you're okay with it, that we remove item
If Jeff's on his way down maybe.
Seventeen for further discussion. It doesn't matter. However you want to do it, we can wait.
I'm I'm good.
It's not like we I'm not, we're not pressed for time. We're okay.
On time.
The next speaker
I I I don't I don't have any issues. I just hadn't seen it before and since since there was some public comment on that.
No, that's fair. The next speaker is that Republic Services was supposed to be here, so they can cancel. So at given added time, they'll be here in February with more information for us. On bringing us uh different, what's the different levels of waste stream? And their anticipation, hopefully a future waste stream. And so they wanted to collect more data before they came than just the high bite. And I'm like, no, I'm fine with them canceling and coming back in February with more information.
Yeah, that'll be hopefully that that meeting is well attended. That's a an important important financially to the county.
Well, I
A great asset.
Despite the utility to come sit on that discussion, there's no need for him to say it twice. Because it's just as important as the utility on the methane gas or renewable natural gas produced. Waste stream.
I just read today it's twenty miles of pipe to collect that gas.
Oh.
It's an impressive project. A mad scientist room there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I think we finished up our commissioner updates.
Yeah. No, this this one just take time to do this. We
Yeah.
We all feel that's done correctly.
Yeah.
I I appreciate you bringing it up, Todd. When you said which item I I had what number it was.
I I I apologize for my being being so green, but then also uh there's been
That's why.
Going going over the bills. There's been there's so much to read.
Trying to say earlier, if I will have things thrown on the consent agenda. If we have concerns, feel free to make a motion removing whatever that we want further discussion and just in process, it seems to be easier.
And that that's what I could in in this, I don't see anything about the lease. That's what I couldn't find earlier and I meant to bring it up this morning uh about any lease amounts.
And they all said some waiting. Could could you do a friendly amendment? Oh, here's Jeff. I'm like, let's get moving here. Get that Jeff. We would like to go a little more in detail on our item seventeen, the consent agenda.
Okay.
Which is uh Dean on the in terms of the lease.
Okay.
A little more detail.
Uh, I can give you some background history and then if you have some questions. Because a few questions have come up. I worked this through with the P A. The big question that came up is why is it a hundred dollars? For one, that was a hundred and why don't we charge for every time they go across a tipping fee? I want, this is very important because it'll end up costing the taxpayers much more money in the long run. Remember, we lease quarries from other people too. And if I'm paying tipping fees for every time our truck goes across that quarry or if I if I charge James Dean, then how do I, how can I fight somebody charging me? Or charging the county. I shouldn't say me, the county. So every time we get a load of sand out of our quarry to sand a road, we pay a tipping fee. Keep it in mind, we have quarries, we lease. Most of our quarries are leased. We only own two of them, two of them. The rest of them are leased. So everything on the west side would pay tipping fees. Those are both of those main quarries are leased. So we pay tipping fees and we take out a lot of sand and a lot of rock. So, okay, yes, the county would get some money from James Dean if we did tipping fees, but in turn, they would also pay money to the other landowners that we have quarries that we own quarries with. So would we gain any money?
No.
Maybe, maybe not. But chance at the best case, it'd be wash. Worst case, the county would pay more. The taxpayers would pay more. So that that's the main reason because we and we lease some of we lease a quarry, we pay a hundred dollars a year. When we lease stuff, this is a very small and so I knew we knew this would come up and that's why it took some time. I actually have a printout. This is how we this is how we came up for the evaluation. We go to buy property. Sorry, I only have one topic.
Yeah, go ahead and scroll.
Um, what we do is we take the assessed value, tax assessed value of the property per acre. If we're only getting a lease, we pay fifty percent of that. This is what we pay. So we have to be fair to charge. We charge the same thing we would what we would expect to pay. And so if you look at that, um, I don't remember the exact numbers off my head.
Yeah.
But that's the value of the property. Tax assessed value. That's how we do it. Then we split that in half by the acre and I think we're getting two tenths of an acre, one tenth of an acre, I don't
Quarter.
Quarter of an acre. So it comes up to four hundred and ninety-three dollars is what the value is. And if we were if we were buying, if we were leasing it from him, that would be our first dollar.
That's perpetual, not yearly either.
Yes, that's perpetual. That's one time. So he's paying a hundred dollars a year. And so he's paid up however, how many years it is. And he did to make the statement, he did come through and he did pay us all the back money. That was over.
And we're probably the main user of that site. That we're the county's probably the main beneficiary.
Yeah, because they get all the tax dollars. So um, yeah, again, it was a small piece. It sits in the site. I had a map and I should have brought all I didn't bring all that stuff. But it's a very, it's a quarter acre. And if you're familiar with James Dean's quarry.
Yes.
It's a quarter acre there of that huge site that the county got years ago from um uh but an orchard. I don't remember which one. Uh, it ended up Mount Adams Orchard, but somebody else bought it prior to that. Yes, and they mine what county hasn't mined that site since eighties, I believe, or seventies. And it's all played out.
And what what's the use for the property that we're trading for that quarter acre? That's on the east coast, on that east.
And it's uh it is a quarry site right now. But the reason it's two years, we're working through this. I gotta be careful because we're under negotiation.
Yeah, be careful.
Uh, but ultimately, we won't take the reason it's two years. We don't want to take it if it isn't reclaimed. I don't want a reclamation site.
Correct.
So again, that's a savings to the taxpayers. Ultimately, what we're going to do with it in the future is we have to take, there's a bad curve on Old Highway Eight. That's where this this site belong is. We would end up buying that property to fix that curve anyway. So it's a long term, long term plan. It's not on the six year. We may not do it for a long time to come. But again, stuff doesn't go down in value. And this, we figured this is a win-win for both sides. That's why we that's why we went down this path.
What what percentage of of projects comes out of that quarry site, James Dean there in Houston? On the on the west end?
For us, quite a bit because that's the main
At least fifty percent if not more, right?
At least, maybe for outside stuff for because the county owns two quarries on the west side, but we cannot sell rock to the public. So only the rock that we use on our projects is used out of our quarry. So I believe James Dean is the only pub or the only private quarry on west side. I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm looking at Seth here, see if he remembers, but
Thanks if you don't count that as important.
Yeah.
There's nothing in pension.
No.
No.
That's a county owned quarry now.
Yeah.
That used to be a private county quarry.
Yes, I I love it.
Yeah, county, uh, we actually gobbled that up when it became a thing.
That that covers everything. I mean, that that uh
Well, thanks for coming back.
Not a problem.
And uh I I appreciate when you have a public comment and things you didn't think of earlier.
Yes, that's fine.
Go through these uh consent agenda and discuss them when you're here during the workshops. But thank you for taking time out to come back.
Not a problem. We will always do that. Uh, we probably should have came up with a little more detail. Uh, we got I got grilled hard enough by the attorneys to make sure that we were doing what was right. They keep us, you know, that there are
Might thank Todd uh for bringing it up.
No, I I I appreciate your your wisdom. I mean, that you you don't often see that government to see the wisdom and No, I I I appreciate your your wit. I mean, that you you don't often see that in government to see the wisdom of. Uh, cause I I know it's come up in public comment and in in meetings that. Uh, we're 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 not charging enough for that or that that's not being paid enough, but. When we're we're one of the main beneficiaries to, I I appreciate your wisdom and seeing. Why charge so much and then go through that paperwork just for us to pay more. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the motion?
I'm ready.
Adopted the consent agenda of twenty items that need the number of. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you and thank you for bringing that up. And at any time, feel free. If you wanna do the motion on the consent agenda, you wanna remove some for further consideration, great. But today we weren't time constrained to get to the next or I would ask for a friendly emotion or remove that, put it later in the meeting.
And my hope in the future is to be less green and and be able to read items and.
Oh, well, I haven't.
Oh, no.
There are always good questions.
No, there will be and.
Yeah.
That's, that's one reason.
I I kept coming on the the first week. There's a lot to read.
Well, I want. Our staff to come in and discuss what's on the consent agenda anyways. So even the public hears it.
Yeah.
And and then have public comments so they can comment on it. And then for us, staff to program. That's all it is.
Yeah.
And so, thank you.
No, I think that there's been a misconception of 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 that site and. And that lease agreement and things like that, that. Is understandable, right? It it does seem like a real small fee. But uh, like I said, and and talking with Jeff earlier, but I I just never got some of the final numbers and fully understood it.
Uh, so I don't have anything under new business. Like I said, Republic Services have canceled. Uh, unfinished business. I didn't have anything. Written. But Commissioner Miss Linas reports.
So you have workshops that you wanted to do on Thursday and I noticed.
Yes.
A lot of you have items on Thursdays, the meetings and. And trainings on Thursdays.
Yeah. I I know we're okay this Thursday for a workshop, which will be. Uh, we have radio talk show at eight. Is that correct?
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five. Uh, then we have a workshop starting at nine thirty with staff.
And that's all downstairs.
And that's all downstairs. And then the afternoon is with the elected officials. And maybe some staff of elected officials. It's their call. Whether they want staff be there in the morning with them or in the afternoon with elected officials. Uh, so that's what's scheduled for Thursday downstairs. Uh, and that is just a, to me, it's an open forum. I'm not doing a set agenda. I'm doing an open forum. Uh, and we'll go from there. It's just kind of a first. Something I wanna do.
I noticed that uh, Mr. Zoller has McCad, or not, it's losting, not McCad, sorry. Lost, lost that, lost that.
On Thursday?
Every other Thursday.
Okay, so you're okay this.
Yeah, I'm okay this Thursday.
So next Thursday is a conflict, I think, with my schedule, Todd's schedule, your schedule. So the question may be if.
I've seen.
We're going to workshop is a Wednesday, yeah, option?
I've seen in other counties that they have their workshops on Monday, then they can go through the bill box and everything together. And then they go into session and have looked at those things, but that's just insane. I see it's cool.
Oh, yeah, you see me cringe on Mondays. I I just know for being a staff member, Mondays are just double terrible. I I think a Wednesday would probably be a better date or if. Well, Friday seems just about as Thursday's on some of the topics.
We don't always have everybody here for departments last.
Yeah, so it's almost Wednesday. We could discuss that next week.
Do it weekly.
And see where we're at.
Um, yeah. Monday's problematic, but but good because the the main thing is probably the the bill box. That no matter if we have any other time, is that I think we'll have ample workshops for the most part. Thursdays will work.
Yeah, we could do.
There there may be some conflicts.
The problem is gonna be is setting a rule aside. I assume this work.
And I've set aside for the last three months downstairs. There, there is one day, there's one Thursday a month that there's somebody else that has it in the afternoon, so I just have a schedule for workshops from the morning until noon.
Yeah, which most of them are open. They're not eight hours and more than a quarter hour.
For a workshop, since there's no voting? If if one of us has to step out for a Zoom meeting or something.
You know, that's what I do. We still have a workshop. There's two of us and the other commissioner, but then this. Discussion could get up to date of where we're at.
And I can Zoom while I could. I don't have to go to one of them all the time.
Well, I just look like I gotta, there's a crab horn in February, which is a Thursday and. And a Friday, you know, from ten to twelve days, you know, we may have to do some workshops, say. Should we go with the other?
Is is the bill box, is it, is it bigger at the beginning of the month or is it, is there any?
This will probably be the largest. Well, next week though, there will be two. But this bill box.
Just for because of month end.
Yes, because of the year. Yes. And then after that, it's just one box and it's not as full as it was.
Yeah, wait.
Just, I respectful heads up. For the directors that work for you and employees that work for us, um. Will be available when you need us to be available. But when you move a workshop from a Thursday to a Wednesday or you're at Mondays. Many employees have pre-planned vacations, medical appointments, because. They know Tuesdays are busy and Thursdays are workshops, so they schedule them on a Wednesday or a Monday. And so, um.
That's good, Mike.
And I think to your staff's defense, every time you have a meeting, it's. Don't work, don't work for them. But again, not a complaint. We'll be there when you need us to be there, but. Maybe give folks time to adjust their calendars, cause they rolled into the new year with probably blacking out Tuesdays and Thursdays and. Trying to work around those days.
So that's a good point. So is WAC usually a morning legislative? And I notice like some of my workshops were. Like I said, ten to twelve, I see coming up. So maybe the afternoon, a little Thursday. We 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 can. I I just.
How much notice do we have to do to change or to add a workshop? I mean, I department heads, I understand that.
I believe it's twenty-four hour notice.
Yeah, for advertising.
But it's better if we give notice on a Tuesday that we're having a workshop there.
Yeah, because you, I mean, it depends on your attendance, cause with the department heads, they can't always attend. Um, unless they have prior notice. I don't know if you guys wanna start it with every other Thursday?
Yeah, let's go Thursday and see where we're at. With every solution creates a problem.
But there is, there will not be one. There'll be one this Thursday, but not next Thursday.
Correct. Uh, depends on our.
Well, that both of you have training on that Thursday.
We do, but training's over to me. Mine's done early afternoon.
Right, but I believe that that one is the one day that we can't have anything in the afternoon.
Oh.
Unless you do it in here, yeah.
My thought process is we really have so much we need to talk about. Well, we possibly will not have workshop all next Thursday. Then probably simplest solution with our schedules, but leave the other Thursdays open.
Or do you wanna, do you wanna just have the afternoon one here?
Well, yeah, we could do the afternoon if we have uh need to.
And we can still decide that.
If you decided today or next week, it's still giving everybody plenty.
Yeah, Tuesday. And if we did, if we needed to have it here. Actually, I really enjoyed the workshop Thursday.
Yeah.
Several people that were here. And our discussion with those people correctly. When when I really appreciated the one lady like, you're talking about me. No, it was really good. And she drove all the way down there from Snow. As a matter of fact, it man ball with the me. Yes, she did.
And I have no problem if there's times I have to be going. I know you'll catch me on.
Yeah, I'm saying, wait, if I can't make a workshop, please move forward with whatever direction I, that's fine. I I I think there may be times there's only gonna be two of us.
Again, you have one if there's only one?
I have the board. I I had a workshop on my own. It was during budget. The other two commissioners didn't show up. We still had a workshop on the budget and I approved.
So that's fully allowable.
I I approved it and when the other board members came back and had an issue with it. I told them, we had it set, you didn't show up, and this is what I approved. And I stood.
Yeah.
Behind mine to say.
I I mean.
It was a budget.
Just like independently, we go to community meetings. I'm okay with with even that when something comes up to. Gather that if 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 directors are coming before and there's something to share.
Let let's for right now, we're having workshop Thursday. We can talk Tuesday.
What time?
Yeah, for the.
That works?
Yeah, no, appreciate the input. Any other meetings? You're going to a meeting this evening. And my goal is to go to the Republican meeting next month. But I'd really like to hear. On on that. Thought process, what people are thinking we can do better.
And 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 so I posed it now to. The. Both the the Republicans and the Democrats, they've had a change of leadership. And so, but I posed it to people that are. I haven't spoke to the to the new leadership or anything like that, but have been talking to them about holding a a purple event. That wasn't during an election year. So they've done a purple event in White Salmon. I don't know if they do it anywhere else.
Can't have heard of purple event.
Yeah, so so you know, normally when you have candidates running, they'll go to Democratic. Things or they'll go Republican events. There's very few where there's just, except for Grange Halls or cer- certain things where it's like, oh, just. This is a gathering. They're all our elected officials and where everybody meets and. And talks and gathers and mingles. And so I've been talking to them about holding something like that. So that it's not so separated amongst party line and amongst, you know, areas like Snowden and. You know, a a gathering, cause I think all of our county issues are not red or blue or. Snowden and Lionel, so to. So I'm kind of, I'll be talking.
Well, and as well as, you know, comments on. Workshops. Or whatever you wanna call it throughout, you know.
Town halls.
Yeah. Town hall is basically a workshop for the board, uh. That, yeah, I wanna have that discussion. I hope we can get our feet on the ground and start in that direction. You know, I say to the board. One every four months to start with and have one in each district.
Right?
You know? If we have a golden one in wherever.
Yeah.
If it's uh, district two is running in Hellsburg or Long Island or wherever, and then three, thirty-one. White Salmon more or. Brown Lake or here or wherever.
Yeah.
And maybe start off that way. But I'd really like it might be a little more.
Yeah.
On the ground, which is fine. Cause I know as we get into issues, whether it's the SDR or what it is. There's gonna be people that want input and that's probably a good time to start having them. To get the input on what we're working.
Yeah. Agreed.
Hey, I appreciate the public comments. Positive feedback. We won't be in positive.
Yeah.
I do. Is there anything else? On the agenda? We, we had one item, but I didn't follow up. With an executive session on it. Needed some feedback on what we were given last week. But I didn't ask for that to be followed up, so we may do that next Tuesday.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
We probably do need to follow up.
We do need to follow up and come to a consensus.
Yeah.
So, okay. Here and see if none is our motion. To adjourn, cause I don't wanna have to apologize again because I really missed.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting for the county commissioners today.
I say the motion.
Good, motion on the floor.
Oh, we recessed. Sorry, I'm taken aback.
Okay. I need your motion to a recess. You're okay with that? The recess to the workshop on Thursday.
Yes.
And uh, all right, we'll vote on the motion as it was amended.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, thank you.